All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. At this time, the first briefing will be a briefing on political signs. Staff will brief City Council on some background research we've done in terms of reviewing what different cities do as it relates to political signs and also some options for City Council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Let's see, the play for this presentation is, I'll give you some context about political signage, kind of how we ended up here, some of the efforts we've done. Then my colleague Dana Harmeyer from the City Attorney's Office will talk about some of the restrictions as it relates to legalities when it comes to freedom of speech. And then Kathy Warren, who's the Director of Planning, will come and talk about zoning and enforcement of political signage. Then I'll come back up, I'll give you a bit more additional information, like what the manager said, some context about what some of our peers do. And then ultimately, we will look to you all to see if you want us to do anything different about how we handle political signage. So, political signage or expressive speech is governed by an administrative directive. Administrative directives are handled by the city manager. Obviously, they are in alignment with where councils' goals and where council wants to be. But this particular A.D. 3.01 outlines where folks can have expressive speech signage, particularly as it relates to voting. Seven days prior to voting beginning, folks can put out signage, beginning at midnight or 12:01 to be exact, seven days prior to voting. So here in Virginia, we have 45 days of early voting. So we have over 50 days of political signage that we contend with. We receive complaints about safety concerns and visual clutter. You all also receive complaints. Planning received complaints, our office as well as the Attorney's Office. So it's something that, once the campaign season starts, we get a lot of feedback. Council requested that we look into some of the concerns, and that's what we did. So this kind of dates back, if you go back to November of our presidential election, it was pretty tense at that time when it got to political signage. So Council, you wanted us to talk to stakeholders, get some feedback, see if we could find a better path than where we were. So our Office of Performance and Accountability, we call it O.P.A. for short, interviewed stakeholders from both major parties, the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, our voter registrar, who's also here, as well as our departments. Because as you know, voting takes place at Building 14, as well as early voting takes place at recreation centers and libraries. So sometimes our staff, who are at those rec. centers or libraries, are put into some interesting situations when they're approached about signage. So we definitely wanted to get their perspectives. We shared in a C.C.S.R. some of the concerns that we got back from those stakeholders. Mainly, it dealt with large signs at Building 14 in the front. Folks felt like there was a lot of activity. And if you think back to November 2024, there were a lot of big signs up front. You had curbside voting, and folks were worried about safety of pedestrians, safety of being able to see. Also, lots of feedback about signage congestion, that there were just a lot of signs on top of one another. So what we did to try to address that feedback was in April, we decreased the size that was allowed in front of Building 14. So the largest signs were 26 by 16 in front of Building 14. And then we did a better job. As part of the A.D., we have maps that show where you can have tents, where you can put your signage. So we improved the maps to show that you can't put tents, can't put signs near the ballot box. So that was our first round of improvements that we did. And those were in place for the June election. Because these things always sound like they're far away. But to put it in perspective, voting for the June 17 primary started in May. So signage was able to go up April 25. So again, we deal lots of days, consecutive days with signage. So we're hoping that we're going to get more positive feedback from that first round of changes that we did, but we got additional complaints and more concerns. So what we did was, in June, we met with what was supposed to be an hour meeting turned into a two-hour meeting with folks from both sides, both parties. And we were intentional in making sure that we had folks who were part of the party, as well as folks who work with candidates, who are actually running the campaign. So the city manager joined us, the city attorney, Dana, Kathy, and myself. We met with these folks, and I'm going to have Dana explain in a couple of minutes. What the parties really were interested in was capping the number of signs per candidate or per issue. So if you're a candidate, like four signs; if you were for the referendum question, four signs; if you were against it. That runs afoul to the Constitution. So Dana will explain that. But after two hours of brainstorming and that really collaborative group, where we landed was reducing the signage that was allowed even in the back would be beneficial. So we updated that so that the largest sign that could be in the back was four feet by four feet. So that went live for this past November, the gubernatorial. But as you know, we got more complaints, so that didn't solve the issue. But I'm going to have Dana come up and talk about why we couldn't do the preferred path and some other options.
So I will say, on the preferred path comment, we said that the parties could voluntarily agree amongst themselves, but as a matter of government restriction, it was problematic, and I'll explain why. 2015 is your controlling case, that is Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. And the Town of Gilbert had a sign ordinance that had different categories of signs, so political signs, ideological signs, which is really a catch-all for non-commercial, non-political, non-temporary, temporary direction signs. And each one of these categories had a different rule as to size, duration, and location of where the signs could be permitted. And so the Supreme Court said two things that are very important in this context. Any sign restriction or regulation that depends on the content of the sign or requires distinctions based on the message a speaker conveys is a content-based regulation of speech. Content-based sign regulations are presumptively unconstitutional and subject to strict scrutiny. So where does that leave us? So time, place, and manner restrictions are available. So a time restriction, as discussed before, as you could say, seven days before, you know, an election, Building 14 is available for signs. Or you can do a place, which, you know, we've talked about the maps, right? Or you can say that there are no signs in the 40-foot restricted zone. And then manner, not as applicable to signs, but you could think of it as no bullhorns, no amplified sound. Those are traditional manner restrictions. So again, you still have time, place, and manner restrictions, and then anything that relates to the content of the sign is going to be problematic. So content-based restrictions are presumptively unconstitutional. So if you have to read the sign to know if it fits within a regulation, it's going to be problematic. And so this will, again, as a government regulator, run into problems if we prescribe the number of signs per candidate or per issue. Again, you have to read the sign to know if it's regulated. Or dividing a space where you say, one half for one party, one half for another party. Or you say that the only signs we'll permit is something that's on the ballot or adjacent to something on the ballot. So those three things are going to be problematic. The things that we can do that are not content-based are, you can simply say, no signs adjacent to Building 14 or the future location. Two caveats, right? So the city would still be able to do government speech, so tell people where to go, and other required advertisements. And then canvassers or campaign representatives still get to move about as long as they're outside of the restricted zone. You could limit a finite number of signs, so 50 signs total. That's not related to the content, it's just based on the number. Or you could do further refining of the height or size limitations. For example, you could just say 26 inches, so your yard signs is all you can get. And so we'll take questions later, but that's the background and the construct that we're working with here.
And so I'm just going to cover what our zoning ordinance says about temporary signage. So within a preservation, agricultural, residential, apartment, or historic and cultural district, or a non-commercial area of a PDAH-1 or PDAH-2 planned development district, a total of 16 square feet of temporary signage is permitted. Within all of our other districts, a total of 32 square feet of temporary signage is permitted. And then in all other districts, no such sign shall be higher than eight feet above grade directly below such sign. And then just as a reminder, you all know, no signs are permitted in the right-of-way or on public property except for the designated polling places. And then this slide is just discussing how we enforce this. All of our enforcement is complaint-based. We have one zoning inspector, F.T., that's assigned solely to address campaign signs the August before the November election. So any election several months before. In September, if the election's going to be in November, all zoning inspectors address campaign sign complaints within their designated areas. And of course, they proactively remove campaign signs in the right-of-way or on public property. And then those signs that are removed by staff from the right-of-way or on public property are then disposed of. Signs on private property that exceed sign restriction are sent a notice of violation to that property owner, and they are asked to remove it within 30 days. And that's standard operating procedure for our enforcement.
So it seems like a shuffle, but this, it really takes a team during election season. I feel like we're all on the phone together trying to decide what's the appropriate action, and we're on the phone with Christine. So I want to give you some context of what our neighbors are doing. So let's start with us. So again, we do seven days prior to voting beginning at that location. So in Building 14, that's quite a number of days, and then the other locations open up. Chesapeake prohibits private signs on their city property. Hampton also prohibits private signs on their property. Newport News, really interested in seeing how they enforce this, but essentially, up to 30 days of consecutive days, three times a year for a sign. Norfolk allows at the voting or polling location the afternoon before, noting that their start's at 5:00 P.M. Sometimes what we find with ours is that folks start camping out because you're not supposed to put them out until midnight. And sometimes that's also a source of tension, where the tension's building in the parking lot as they're waiting to be able to put out the signs at midnight. Portsmouth prohibits private signage, and they allow yard signs on Election Day. So that's how our peers are handling it. So before we go and try to get your feedback, just additional context, we are noticing, I think you all are noticing, just growing tension and the frustration around yard signage. When we get the phone calls, when we talk to our staff, it's as though tempers are heightened. Folks are a bit more passionate about it. So on our side, we're trying to give our staff more training on what the rules are so they can feel comfortable having conversations with the stakeholders. I wanted to mention Hampton and Newport News, actually, when you become eligible for being on the ballot, they actually send you a packet of their signage rules, and you're required to sign it, saying that you've read it, you understand it, and you've reviewed it. So we're looking at what are some things that we can do to improve the education component of our signage. But something we really wanted to also bring to your attention, our days at Building 14 are numbered. I know the Electoral Board and the voter registrar are excited about that. Council made an investment in a new building, because currently they operate from six separate buildings. So the new building, it's moving to the center of population for our community, but in moving there, they are no longer going to be on a government campus surrounded by government uses. We will actually be in a condo association. And most of you haven't probably been out there, so we want to show you some of the area. Because when we have to do new maps for, if we allow signage, where are they allowed? Sometimes we get commentary on, there's not enough space allotted for signage. Some folks feel like there's too much space. So we'll want to be thoughtful in how we carve out the space. So this is going to be a video that hopefully plays the right way. You can see, that's a lot of land for signage, a lot of space for potential tension of where signs go, where do tents go. What's not shown is that there's going to be a neighbor that's a non-governmental entity to the left of that land, as well as in front. So making sure we're being mindful of being good neighbors while also allowing for expressive speech. So we will be curious to get your feedback on, how do you want us to go about drawing these maps, any particular engagement you want us to do? But that's quite a bit of land. So that's our formal portion, but really interested in having some dialogue with you all, based on your perspective, and give us any direction that you would like for us to take.
Rosemary, and then Worth.
First of all, I can say, it's really gotten out of control. And it's visually, Building 14, just a mess. And tensions between people, it's not necessary. And frankly, for the most part, I think very few people decide how they're going to vote depending on what the sign says. Unless there's, it's a rare thing, but people, either they know how they're going to vote, or they talk to people when they're coming in and all that, not by this proliferation of signs, there are so many. I personally think for Building 14 or our new condo association building, that we have no signs. Some of our sister cities, that's what they're doing, and I think they're wise in doing that. But where I do think we should allow signage is the day of voting, where we're having, I think it'd be helpful, because we have a lot of, we have 108 precincts, and some of those are hard to find a little bit. And I think the day of, it would be better. And you think about it, with the 10-1 system, it's going to be one school board race, one council race, or the delegates and senators. It won't be like Building 14 where there's all these races going on, too. Even there, it won't be, shouldn't be quite as much. So I think the day of voting at the 108 precincts, we should allow signage. But I think it would take a lot of the ire and the fussing and the fighting away and the visual clutter that it creates, if we just say no to everybody, and that's fair to everyone. That's my thoughts.
Okay, we're going to go, we're going to go Worth and Hutch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for, the team for doing this work, and it is important, and we do need to get better control of this, in my opinion. To me, there's two issues or two areas. With the new voter registrar's office, and I agree, maybe, so my question, so no signs there, but question for the city attorney, is that constitutional, Dana, on Chesapeake? Because I thought you said we had to allow it.
Okay, so if you see the second set of bullets, so it would be a content neutral regulation to say, no signs.
We can do that.
Well, but you've got sort of the two caveats that I made to that, right? You still have the government signs to tell people where to go and that sort of thing. And then you have to allow the canvasser, there's an AG opinion, Virginia AG opinion about a year ago, that said that the 40-foot restricted zone, as it applied to canvassers, was acceptable as far as a restriction on speech. So, subject to those two caveats, you could say, no private signs, yes?
Except on Election Day, right.
Well, and if I may on that one, we would only speak to the locations that the city controls. Many of those polling locations are private, churches, what have you, so we would only speak to the city locations.
Yes, one church in my district does not allow Election Day at all, which I'm fine with that as well. So the second part to me, which also is, causes a lot of discussion and passion around town, is the run-up to Election Day, starting as early as June. Yard signs are okay to me for, if candidates want to get folks to put yard signs on their own private property, but along our public streets. And last, this past year was a lot, but it's always a lot, and I just think it's really bad. But look how much time, I just heard you all say, all three of y'all and more, your staffs, are involved with this, and it takes up, it's distracting from your work, and it costs the city money. And I have as much concern about that, your efficiency, as much as I do. I think public safety, you know, these signs are very close to the road, and I've put signs out, there's no question about it, I'll be, I'll admit that as much as anyone else, but close to the road, but I do respect public safety. But it's a fine line, because it is free speech, but we do see a lot of signs in the public right-aways on the run-up. I mean, June, July, August, September, all those months cost money. It's dangerous to put the signs out, it's dangerous to pull the signs back up, dangerous to drop the cars, and I agree, signs don't necessarily influence, but it does say the presence of the campaigns. It's tough, and it's free speech, but I'm just concerned how much time it takes staff to, this is a big city geographically, and I heard you all say this right here, and how many inspectors, Ms. Warren, or have to, do you all have territories across the city?
So we do, we have several inspectors, and once we get closer to the election, in their territories, they start picking the signs up and addressing them in each territory.
So I'm just putting this out there, I like to sign, maybe sign off campaigns, just sign off on a signed package when they receive documents, and then, I don't want penalties, I'm just putting this out there for discussion, but should a campaign get us a letter if a certain amount of signs are picked up, or, I'm just putting this, because it's sign pollution, it's expensive, and it takes up staff's time.
Okay, Hutch, and then Dr.
Okay, so first off, Vice Mayor and I have spoke several times about this, along with some other colleagues, and we feel pretty strongly that they should either be shrank drastically, you know, the number, or do away with, I think is where we're at. This is talking to some of the delegates, and it's just been interesting to me, and like, I like to joke, I've run two campaigns, and what, most everybody's run one. So I've got some experience with it, and the expense, the expense to our people, I was on a first-name basis with a lot of your folks trying to do the right thing, because you do put some down sometime, and you're like, you don't realize it's in the wrong spot, even though the registrar gives you a, she, we get a packet, I say that, but it's just kind of like what Dana explained a minute ago, I'm still lost. So, you know, you try to, you try to, you try to take it all in, but mistakes are made, and you try to work with it. Part of it for me is the perpetual ones that are just thrown up everywhere. We still have some, and I've been meaning to pick them up. They're in Woodstock, they're not mine, but they're at the school, they're in Woodstock Elementary, they're still sitting out by the, by the street. I've picked up a bunch of signs along the way, just to get rid of them. At first, you're like a little leery, but then it's like, okay, now we're two weeks past, you know, just get rid of them. So I'll get them, I'm not asking anybody to go do it, but, I know, but I'm just saying, I just keep forgetting. But back to what I was saying, I'm really more in the camp of zero is better, you know? I spent a lot of time, y'all, at the Kimsville Library the last two election cycles, a lot, almost like camping. So, and the signs are atrocious. It's like a kaleidoscope, you can't, you can't see through things. Out on the main road, there's lines of delineation, I mean, it feels like, this is just not proper. You know, it just feels, it feels nasty, you know? It doesn't, I don't see where it adds any value. And talking, I can say, like I like to say about my diner guys, you know, at the diner, they all think it's crazy. They're like, you can't even tell, when you're looking at it going down Kimsville Road, I guess you could throw a dart and maybe pick a name that it hits on, because you can't, you can't even read them, there's so much in front of you to try to pay attention to. Not to mention, and I know this is not our responsibility necessarily as a body, but as the person, when you're buying all this stuff and you having to figure that in, it kind of goes to something else that we'll be talking about here in a little while, is is that, it just feels, it feels over the top and just not necessary. And like the Vice Mayor said, I don't think anybody's walking up and going, oh, I'm going to, oh Hutch, I'm going to vote for him, that's my, that's why I'm going to vote. I just don't think it's what it's about. And the semi-getting-violent part that I was a part of with you two last year, well, I mean, not with y'all, not with y'all.
You were getting violent.
John, I'll do an interview with you later. Amy's dying right now. It didn't feel real good for all of us being out there with what was getting, what was, the tempers were flaring over the signs, and I think there's got to be some adults in the room, and that's what we're here for. So I'm really for cutting them way down, or doing away, either numbers that we can say, this is what you get, total, or zero is probably fine, and then Election Day, you can put up, even a number there should be made, to how many you can have at Fairfield Elementary or wherever the other polling places are. So I hope I got to where I was trying. Thanks.
And I know the diner, I go to the diner, Hutch.
Yes, you do.
And I think about poor Rocky Holcomb, how many elections he's been through in the last couple months.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go Josh and Stacy.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for the presentation. So I was a little late, we've got a farther drive from Bayside than some of the rest, but I agree with everything that's been said. Only thing I'd really like to add is the environmental piece. The signs are destructive to the environment, they're all over the place, they still are. We drive all over the place, I mean, and we see them, and they shouldn't be up anymore. And this is, I would, I would just like to just call, like, call to our citizens, please don't put them in the right-of-way. Please don't put them in the median. And if you want to go do that, go pick them up, because they're still out there. And, you know, maybe something we can do is like a strict, a medium, and a light option, and can we bring it back to our retreat to talk about, like, during the process thing? I don't know if, like, when a decision needs to be made, but I mean, if we could have maybe a couple of different options to consider. And then the only other thing I'd add is, you know, just, and this goes to what you were saying, Hutch, about like, allowing people to understand the kind of jobs that we have, and what it takes, and how much it costs, and all of that. But there's a different side of that. I remember, and I'm sure you probably all do, I ran for the first time years ago, and what it felt like to see somebody in your neighborhood take a sign that you gave to them because they believed in you and put it in their yard. It's unreal to think about, it was like, pinched myself kind of crazy to think that somebody would support me enough to have their name in their front yard. And running for the first time, we all, I guess, get to do that once, but when you run and you don't have name ID, those signs do help, like, on the reinforcement side. And yeah, they're clutter, and yeah, they're environmental problems, but anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out. So I hope we find some balance, and I'd love to see some options.
Dave, Stacy.
I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach, and, but first I'll say, anything that we do, anything, any ordinance that we put in place, or any kind of restriction we try to put in place, and this is not accusatory of anyone, but without equitable enforcement, it's meaningless and could potentially be harmful. So I think that we can talk about how we want to restrict these, but unless we come up with a mechanism to make equitable enforcement, then we are, we could be potentially doing harm to candidates. And secondly, Yogi Berra once said, nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded. Well, it's a little bit of my thinking on these signs, you know, that, why put these signs out? Nobody goes, nobody votes because you have a sign out there. Well, maybe they don't vote because you have a sign out there, or whatever, but if you don't, you know, if you just surrender to the opponent, then they're going to have all these signs out there, and unless you counter, unless you, unless you add to the confusion... confusion, unless you, unless you cause the confusion, then you're surrendering that, that ground. So, you know, people are going to, as long as they're allowed to, people are going to put signs out, okay, and they're not going to voluntarily restrict, and they're not going to voluntarily comply unless there is equitable enforcement. So this idea that signs are a waste, or signs don't work, or sign, as long as there's campaigns, there's going to be signs, unless we do away with them, and I'm fine with that if we're going to do away with them, but we really need to think about how we're going to enforce this, and with being fair to all the candidates all the time. We have some voting precincts that are on city property, so if we reduce it and say no, you know, no signs on city property, then candidates that have their precincts on city property should be at a disadvantage versus if they're at a church or there's some other place where signs are allowed, you know. So there's a lot to be thought, thought here, and I don't think there's an easy answer. And I think it's something we should discuss, and, but again, without enforcement, it's going to add to the flaring of tempers and only encouraging, you know, bad behavior.
Thank you so much for all of the information you've given. Over the years, we've noticed from where you cannot touch anybody else's sign, if they put it up, you don't touch it until they come to get it down. There was one situation, 2010, 2011. Another thing was within what Councilmember Remick and Cummings mentioned, where you put them. Long ago, they weren't put in front of the churches until it was actual, day before or so forth, that you actually now see a church, but what they're, because there's a difference between church and state, so, you know, how do you all address something like that? This is something we really need to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I hadn't thought about something until you mentioned it, Stacy, and it might not be for you all, it might be that like the local party organizers that already, and I'm sure those of us who have campaigned as well know our precincts, I'm curious about the division of like, private versus public precinct places. So, for example, do some districts have more schools and libraries and more churches? And I would be interested in what that breakdown looks like as we're making this decision to make sure that the decision doesn't unduly affect one district and one candidate over another. But I do have a question on the restriction. So say, for example, if we were to say, let's reduce the number of total count to 50 on, you know, at the new registrar's office, would that be 50 total, or like 25 for each? And what if someone's independent and they're like, I'm not in it? You're just like, that's just all signs, and you talk about tension. If that's what we're trying to reduce, I don't see that helping us.
I agree, it won't help you, but the rule is, the rule is stated down there, the second from the bottom, a finite number of signs on the property irrespective of content. And so that would be 50 total.
I don't see that direction as helpful at all, if our goal is to help minimize all the pressures that people are feeling for the people working there, the voters who are trying to get there, but the parties and the candidates too. So this is sounding all or nothing to me.
Okay, let me say this, it's not unusual when people compete for space, and it's kind of like a bodybuilding contest where everybody tries to get in the turn of each other, you know, take up space. It really is, because you'll go to some polling spots and you'll see 25 yard signs right after another, taking up space in front of everybody else. And I think that's where the tensions come. And, you know, to be fair and equitable, there was a time before social media and all other things, where you were talking about name recognition, you know, signs are a very small part of getting your message out now. That wasn't always true in the past. And, you know, the thing is with tensions, and let's put it this way, we have a high temperature going around everywhere in this nation when it comes to politics these days. And I think anything that we can do to de-escalate, and I think it was a point made that a person's yard sign in front of people's property, you know, really gives a message, but when you take a look, you know, they have this thing, you know, term noise, you know, even when you see a whole bunch of stuff at one time, it's rough to process one thing. Okay, so when you go to these places, so I kind of like Rosemary's idea, you know, it's uniform and it's enforceable, and, you know, the board of elections can come around with no signs, and if people want to put a finite number up on Election Day, you know, I think that's kind of a fair compromise. I know some folks ain't going to like that, but the point is though, and, you know, once again, I'm still driving around and I still see signs up, you know, sometimes four by fours, you know, from, you know, the previous election. I think if there's going to be an enforcement that, you know, when I first got elected, I had a constituent say, you know, can you take down your signs within 48 hours, please? I'll vote for you. Yeah. And they actually had a picture of me in the pilot doing it because I went out and did it. But I'm just saying that fairness to everybody, signs are more meaningful when they're in the neighborhoods. And, you know, and the point is though, it's kind of like visual pollution, and it really, I don't think goes, and I tell you what I think, especially these days in the polarized state of politics, when people go to the polls, they already have a pretty good idea, you know, who they're going to be voting for. So my recommendation, did you want to say?
It also puts our staffs in a terrible position because fighting amongst the different people, and I must say, who's right or wrong, it doesn't go, now, we all know that there's tension and there's fighting that goes on, and it puts our staff, whether they're the electoral board, or in front of Bayside Rec Center or whatever, it puts them, it takes them away from the jobs and puts them in a very difficult spot. If we don't have any signs out there, that's easy. Everybody's treated the same, and they can, you can have your poll workers and they can hand out stuff, and all, none of that should change. Just think how, on television, wherever they're talking about voting, they always focus on Virginia Beach signs, because all of those other cities don't allow them, and we do, and so they show all those proliferation of signs because there's so many and it's such a mess. So I think it would really also help our staff.
No, 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 you're fine. Stacy, did you have something? I, Jennifer said, and I, I'm all kind of saying here, seems to me, the real solution is all or nothing.
Yes. To try to mitigate and limit, hard to enforce.
Okay, why don't we do this, why don't we go ahead and, you know, draft a resolution? You know, basically, you know, what we've been talking about, I think Rosemary said, you know, none on, you know, city property, and then on Election Day, you know, a finite amount of thing, you know, put it out there, and I don't know if you want to even have a public hearing on a prior or two, or, you know, so this way, you know, people can come forward and speak, but, you know, I think we got to get it out there. And, you know, my friends, we have, we are so blessed to have an election every year, especially, you know, the folks at, you know, the voter registrar, you know, we can't have our folks in the voter registrar, you know, wearing, you know, black and white striped shirts with a whistle, you know, because they get in the middle of a lot of this stuff when there's a dispute. So would be okay to go forward with a resolution, Jennifer?
Is that per candidate, is that per polling site, and like putting it, I know, like the education packet, so when candidates know, hey?
Listen, Mayor, I would say, if you, if you all land on Election Day only, I would say, like, allow us to carve a finite location rather than, rather than pick a finite number, because then you may end up with 50 Jane Doe signs, because they took up the whole number. So I think if you allow us at the public polling stations to carve out a finite location where they can go, then, you know, obviously we'll make sure it's public facing so the public can see it, right, you know, but if you give us that boundary, that's probably better, and it's one day, so I think it will help a lot.
And what about setting a time, like, maybe 6:00 PM before Election Day? Or midnight, you have people out driving around between 12 and 4 o'clock in the morning, which is kind of crazy.
It's kind of like March Madness.
I think one of the cities decided at 5:00 PM.
Whenever they close. You want a half hour or so to get them all, you know, like, whatever.
You want to set a time, if you're only going to do it like that one day, you probably need to say what that time is of that one day.
If Stacy and Mark.
To me, I don't know exactly what you mean by setting a finite space, but, so therefore, if one candidate were to get there early and put 100 signs in that one space, not allowing, not allowing for any other, I mean, because I have a great picture here of what happened right here at building 14, you know, that, so certain candidates would just take up all the space and not allow space for other candidates, and I don't know that that, that's not going to solve the problem.
Well, the other thing is too, Rosemary, consideration, you know, just make it, you know, even on Election Day, people know what they're doing, and they're going to have poll workers out anywhere, more than likely, you know, just, you know, met them all together.
Try it and then it seems to be a problem with the back.
Worthen then Josh.
And also, do we consider the size of the sign? Should it be no more than 16 square feet, which is?
We might be banning signs purely.
On Election Day.
On Election Day.
16 square feet, 4 by 4, or some, some.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, the big sign, I don't know, that, kind of a thing that, you know, sometimes I think yard signs are as effective as the big ones.
So I'm just trying to hone in a little bit, so we were saying maybe 5:00 or 6:00 PM the day before, otherwise none, unless it's on private property. But did we talk about, like, and you had suggested, are there a limit, like, is it 10 signs per precinct?
That's what I was going to ask.
It's like.
Patrick said, you know, that might be a problem.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like, it, like, it's not perfect, right, because as a Comings pointed out, it could cause a problem. I was also going to ask, Mayor, you mentioned, maybe you limit the size of the signs so you fit location, and yard signs too, you know, I know a lot of big signs, and that may possibly help as well.
So just, just as a follow-up, because there was one more point I was going to make about the size of the signs, and, and it speaks to just how much I love partisanship in local elections, but the, the parties have their, you know, and I think we need to talk to the parties just because they're participants. I don't like seeing those big signs with all the left or right endorsed candidates, but it's a fact of life, they exist, so I think we need to, and those are larger than your typical signs. So I would maybe just respectfully ask Mayor, before we do an ordinance, maybe we kind of think about some of these variables and then, and bring it back, but I, and I do want to do something, though, and I think less is more.
Yeah, let's go, Patrick and Hutch.
So, Mr. Mayor, y'all asked for some information, we could get you that information, right? You asked for the breakdown of public, private versus public polling stations in the precincts, we can give you that information, we can give you a draft resolution that we can share amongst you all, and you all can consider it. We were getting towards the end of the year, so this may be something that Council will take up in January, you know, and to give you all some time to kind of process it, to kind of think before you, if we possibly make this shift, you can think about it before you make the shift.
Yeah, I was going to recommend a draft resolution.
I didn't have any more, thanks.
All right, one go.
I just had one thing, when you mentioned about the size, sometimes not only each person will have their signs, but we have groups, like an organization, we have signs that have all their people, and that's a different size, so that should be considered as well.
Yeah, let's go ahead with the draft resolution and we'll chat about it, okay? All right, great. Hey, thank you, that was the toughest assignment.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, if council recalls, before the summer recess, council asked us to think of an idea where we can incentivize residents to come to the Oceanfront and enjoy the restaurants and the different activities at Oceanfront. So staff asked us to kind of think about a free oceanfront parking program. Staff has been working to put that together, and staff wants to present a presentation to give you options to consider. Also, as part of that presentation, we talked about the fact that the Parking Enterprise Fund is a, a Parking Enterprise Fund, not necessarily supported by the, by the General Fund, and to move to free and to increase that risk, we will probably need to look at additional cost increases for parking in these garages and these lots. So staff will give you a concept of what that would look like, should we want to move forward with this, with the free program that we're presenting today. The next voice you'll hear will be LJ Hanson, he's going to go over the program and introduce our new parking administrator.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, it's my pleasure this afternoon to deliver some really good news, and that really good news is that hopefully this is the last time you're going to hear from me on a parking presentation. All jokes aside, the city is very fortunate, we were able to find a very qualified applicant in John Crawford. John has over 24 years of experience. John, would you mind standing up just so they can see you? So John Crawford comes to us from Manitou Springs in Colorado, he's also worked in Colorado Springs and Wilmington, North Carolina, he has over 24 years of experience. He is a PTMP, which is an accreditation in the parking program. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank Tavris Parker, and Tavris Parker has been filling some very big shoes and helping me try and muddle through what we've been working on for the last couple of months. But it is my pleasure today to talk to you about what we've come up with in regards to oceanfront parking and resident parking at the oceanfront. So a little bit of background, staff has presented on the parking fund to City Council and this topic on February 18th and July 1st. City Council, you all asked us to investigate the potential for free or discounted parking in the resort area for Virginia Beach residents. This presentation is going to give you what we believe is a good recommendation at this point, the best of our knowledge, something that we think is workable, and something that we think offers real value to the residents of Virginia Beach. As the manager pointed out, and I feel compelled to remind everybody, the parking fund is an enterprise fund. That means that as an enterprise fund, it is required to sustain itself to the degree that is possible. That means that it is not generally supported by the General Fund. Now, I'm putting some caveats in there because the General Fund and sometimes the TIP do help with construction of parking facilities, but the day-to-day operations really should be supported as an enterprise fund. It is not also a revenue stream for the city's general fund, that means anything that we generate in the parking fund does not come back to offset taxes. And that revenue is specifically used for the operating, cleaning, and maintaining of the parking facilities and the elevators, keeping the paint fresh, making sure that the shrubbery that gets run over gets replaced, there's a lot of expenses that go into just running the parking system. So as we looked at what council asked us to do, we came up with a couple of objectives that we thought we heard, and one was to create a resident parking program for use at the oceanfront. And today, when I speak of the oceanfront, I'm specifically talking about that area that exists between Pacific and Atlantic, so what we oftentimes call the 100 and 200 blocks at the oceanfront. There is one exception, we're also going to throw the 25th Street Garage in, because it functions in much the same way as the rest of the oceanfront parking does. That's on the other side of Pacific, it's on the west side of Pacific, but for the most part, we're talking about that area between Pacific and Atlantic. And so this would not count. And so this would not count, say, the Atlantic Park development, it's not gonna count the Sports Center Civic Convention Center that I just spoke about a couple of weeks ago. We also were hoping to provide streamlined parking payment and validating, a validation process. I spoke to you before about some of the challenges of having a resident program and understanding exactly what a resident means and how we're gonna validate that that person is still a resident, that they didn't move from, from our city to, say, Chesapeake or some other city and still have something on their, on their driver's license that is not correct. We want to make sure that we modernize and incentivize whatever it is that we do and that ultimately that it encourages turnover in high demand areas. And specifically, that's gonna be, to a large degree, that's the on-street parking, which is real close to the, to the front end. And I think we have some interesting ideas. So with that in mind, I just also want to point out that we have several programs that exist today, and this is not a comprehensive list of all of the programs that the parking program runs, but this does give you some idea of some of the things that we already do to incentivize or to try to foster specific behaviors in different areas. We have an existing residential discount, which is three dollars after five o'clock. We have on-street parking, which is our, our regular rate is two dollars per hour, but by code, that two dollars per hour is limited on-street to no more than three hours. So that's by code. We have monthly parking rates that are available for either residents that live adjacent to the parking or some people use it on a more frequent basis. Now, today, that rate is fifty dollars a month for non-reserved spaces and a hundred dollars a month for a reserved space. We also have a weekly, a weekly parking program, which is fifty dollars a week. And if you look at, what is that, bullet four and bullet three, you'll say, well, why would you pay fifty dollars a week if you could pay fifty dollars a month? And there really is some differences in the program, some subtle nuances. And in garages, we pay two dollars an hour. There's a max of twenty dollars and then the rates renew daily at five o'clock. We also have a seasonal lot permit, which is, is pretty popular. That's seventy dollars for the first permit, and then if you have a second house or a second permit in the house, it's a ten dollar for the second permit. And then we have a number of residential programs that are listed on the bottom. So our recommendation to council at this time would be to introduce a fifty-dollar annual resident parking voucher, and that would be renewed annually with proof of residency. That voucher would have credits usable at the locations and on-street spaces identified as the oceanfront service zones. And that's that area that I just told you about, between Pacific and Atlantic. It wouldn't be useful outside of those areas. So this wouldn't affect Sandbridge, Croatan, Atlantic Park. This would be specifically for the oceanfront service zones. The program is designed to be a digital voucher, meaning that you would have to have a digital account with us on your phone. It would track, it would help us to track usage by residents. It would, that would be really critical for helping us to understand where residents want to use and also be able to feed back with the residents and be able to push out some messages and help them to understand events that might be ongoing if we're having particular parking challenges during the summer months and also help us to understand where they're going and what it is that they're seeing. We would offer an opportunity to reload that voucher after you use your fifty dollars. That would be for the, for a first reload, we'd allow you to pay twenty-five dollars and get another fifty dollars worth of parking in the, in the course of the same year. So for basically twenty-five dollars, you'd get a hundred dollars worth of parking. We think that represents a very good value for the residents. It demonstrates council's commitment to affordability and it also helps us to create a measure of retention and, and program loyalty. These are the facilities that I've identified. So the lots, the Second Street, Fourth Street and Rudy Loop lots. Garages would be Ninth Street, Twenty-Fifth and Thirty-First Street. It also includes on-street metered spaces for that same area. So this is the area between Rudy Loop and Thirty-Eighth Street, both those spaces that are available on Atlantic and those spaces that are on the side streets, the two hundred block, as we call it, between the same area, between Rudy and Thirty-Eighth. There are a couple of modifications that we are suggesting to the existing fee program, though. We think that this is gonna have an impact to the parking fund and we do need to make a couple of adjustments to help keep us right-sized and we want to make sure that we're not doing an impact to the parking fund, but we're also trying to be fair and, and trying to be still responsive to what we're hearing as feedback from the community. We are recommending to eliminate the three dollar after five P M. resident discount, but if you have fifty dollars in credits, we think that that is a way that helps to kind of offset that cost to, to the residents. It's also a particularly difficult discount to apply. It's difficult for us to, because it require, usually requires somebody to be there or they have to call a number, they have to text a number. It's, it's just a little bit more of a challenge. We're also recommending eliminating the three-hour on-street parking maximum. And again, that's by code, so if council decides to go this way, that's something that we would have to address through a code amendment. And then we also have a progressive pricing strategy that we're proposing, a new hourly structure. And this is actually designed to help us move vehicles from, for longer stays, to move them from the street parking towards the garages and lots. But it actually offers quite a bit of a discount for the first little bit. So we think that there's, there's additional value that's here for the residents and for our visitors. So again, if I remind you, today, it's two dollars an hour, flat rate, every hour, it's two dollars an hour. Now, that is unless there's a parking garage where we have some type of an event. We do have peak pricing. There are certain days of the year where we just charge a flat rate of twenty dollars. But I'm, I'm talking in our general overall rate is two dollars an hour. What we're proposing is a progressive pricing strategy. So for the first hour, it would only be a dollar. If you just want to stop in, grab an ice cream with the kids, or you want to grab a slice of pizza or something like that, you can do this. And that's in the on-street surface lots or garages, a dollar for the first hour, two dollars for the second hour. That would line up with pretty much what we have today. So if you only stay for two, two hours, you can get in and get out for a dollar less than it costs you today. Now, when you go to the third hour, there's a little bit of a difference between what we're doing on the on-street surface lots and garages as we move forward. On-street, it'd be three dollars for the third hour. Hours four and five would be six dollars an hour. Hours six and seven, seven dollars an hour, and eight and over would be eight dollars an hour. So the incentive is really to move away from on-street parking. If you're gonna stay for five, six, seven hours, not parking on-street would be your best choice. It would be far smarter to move to the garages, to the surface lot. In those cases, we're just proposing to change that for hours three and more to three dollars an hour with a daily max of twenty-four dollars, which is a little bit higher than it is today. We don't think that this is gonna represent a significant change to most of, most of the users, but for those users that come and stay for long periods of time, which are the people that we're really trying to incentivize to move to the surface lots and garages, this should provide that incentive. There's some footnotes on the bottom, though, just, just so that you have them. On-street parking, there's no time limit. Again, that's our proposal. Parking is between the hours of six A M. and two-thirty A M. the next day. Rudy Loop is a little bit different. The enforcement there is from ten A M. to two-thirty A M. and that has to do with the fishermen, surfers. That's a long time commitment that the city has made to those organ, to those groups. In the surface lots and garages, the hours are the same as the on-street, six A M. to two-thirty A M. We have a couple of other recommendations as far as the pricing strategy goes. We would recommend increasing the unreserved monthly parking rate, which is currently sixty dollars a month to a hundred dollars a month, and increasing the reserved monthly parking rate, which is currently a hundred dollars a month to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. We did some limited evaluation of other communities such as Norfolk, Wilmington, Richmond. We're right in line with where they are. Those numbers line up very close to what we're seeing in those other communities. We're also recommending to increase the seasonal lot permit. If you recall, it's currently seventy dollars with the second one at ten dollars. We're recommending changing that from seventy dollars to a hundred dollars and eliminate the discount on the second permit. We think that that is a fair rate and is appropriate. By making these changes, we expect to see a turnover in the prime oceanfront spaces, specifically the on-street area. We're anticipating to have enough revenue growth to cover the expected loss as a result of, of the free voucher. And that growth then should be able to help us offset capital maintenance and operational needs. We're expecting to gain a lot of insight into how our residents are parking or using the system, and we're really hoping to increase resident satisfaction. And also, our, our business is at the oceanfront. We know that this is something that they're very much interested in and we hope that this will recommend, that this recommendation will give them some measure of what they're looking for. In order to make all this happen, though, we are requesting one additional F T E. And this F T E would be in the parking fund. This is not a general fund position. This position, we believe, is necessary to help us with the enrollment, the being able to keep an eye on whether the annual verification of residency, being able to help people reload their cards, that type of thing. I say their cards, it's not a card, it's a digital account, but yeah. So next steps, should council like this proposal and, and ask us to move forward, what we would propose to do next would be to start making the technical adjustments. There's a couple of things we have to do on the back end to make this available and also to be able to make it something that's really easy for our residents to be able to access, to be able to see what their balance is and, and to be able to see what's happening with their account. So there's some work we have to do on the back end. We would have to bring an ordinance modification to city council to modify sections twenty-one, three-twenty-two and twenty-one, three-twenty-three, which are the sections in city code that have the three-hour limit on metered parking. And then we would propose to begin the program April first, twenty-twenty-six, which if you recall, that's the same date that we're proposing to make the changes at the Sports Center Convention Center, and that lines up with when we start charging again in our lots. Registration, though, we would expect to begin in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-six. I can't give you an exact date yet because we're still trying to figure out the technical aspects. And with that, I'd be happy, we will be happy to take any questions.
This is quite an interesting proposal. Thank you for working so hard on it and it's, it's really, it's out of the box thinking. I really take that. So I just want to make sure that this is an opt-in program, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
People have to opt in, but they're gonna get a fifty dollars worth of free parking if you are a city of Virginia Beach resident.
Yes, ma'am.
And then if you want more, you get it for half price.
For the, for one reload, just, just one reload. It can't, we can't do that forever. I think that would, would offer a real challenge, but yeah.
Okay, but that's still, that's still a pretty good deal. Can you explain how the digital, how it works? I mean, say someone like me that's maybe a little bit challenged digitally, how I would, how I would use it?
I, I'm gonna let John take that question. John's a little way more technically savvy than I am, but one thing I wanted to point out, because you pointed out that this is an opt-in program and I think that's a really valuable point, but even if they choose not to opt in, if we select this, if you look at the, the progressive pricing strategy, even if they don't opt in, for hours one, two and three, they're, they're at neutral. If they only stay for two hours, it's a dollar less than it is today. If they stay for an hour, it's a dollar less than it is.
That's for everyone.
That's correct. And so I, I think, and, and I, I really do want to give credit to Tavris and John. They came up with the, with the pricing strategy. I'm not blaming it on them. If you hate it, if you hate it, it's my fault. But if you like it, I, I do want to give them credit because they put a lot of work into it.
It's really fascinating and I, and before he explains how it works, I guess we always have to, this is an enterprise fund, so we have to look at the finances and make sure that we're gonna be sound financially with this program, and I'm sure you must have done that.
We did to the extent we can. It's really hard to know how many people are going, are going to want to sign up. I, I think that there's a, there's a percentage of the population that is gonna say, I just don't want to do it. And we think that the progressive pricing strategy offers them something. There's a percentage of people that are like, eh, yeah, yeah, let's do this, let's sign up for this. And we think, but we can't judge what that is. There's always the possibility, we come back to you and say that the resident parking program is so successful, we might need to adjust some of the rates. But we really believe that there's, that there's enough in here to, to, to at least get us through a year and be able to use those metrics that we learn along the way to figure out how people are using them.
Well, and a married couple would each get fifty dollars, right?
Yes, ma'am. That was, that was one of the, that was a good talking point.
You know, a couple get a hundred dollars with the free parking.
Yes.
Now, to now you explain how it works.
John, do you want to explain how that?
How the app would work.
How the app might work? Yes, please.
Welcome to the baptism by fire.
Thank you. I've had experience with other councils and I'm looking forward to getting to know everyone here, so. And just for the record, I'm John Crawford. I'm the new parking administrator for the city of Virginia Beach, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Our, our plan is to have on a mobile payment app, the app to be determined at this point. We're evaluating two or three different providers, but we know that they can all support this type of program. It's commonly referred to in a couple of different ways. If you look at other cities, it's either a voucher program where the people register and we provide a voucher that's assigned to their account, or it's what's called a wallet. A lot of the mobile parking applications have a way you could just load a certain amount of money onto your account and draw off of it so you're not using your credit card every time you pay. We could piggyback on that type of a situation. So we're gonna evaluate what we think is the easiest way to roll this out and easiest for people to use, but it will be through a mobile app situation. Can I speak to the money a little bit or you want me to stay away from that? So we, L J.'s exactly right. It's very hard, especially with the on-street, to try to judge how this is gonna impact us financially because you've had an artificial three-hour cap. I think in the long run, I'll just speak, I think that in the long run, we'll collect more money, but the people that are used to using it as a three-hour option will actually be encouraged to come down a little bit more. As L J. said, you want to buy that piece of pizza, you want to get a coffee, you just want to meet somebody for a few minutes, the ice cream, all that is a benefit to the residents that want to use the on-street. Off-street and the three parking garages, I did some very, very rough calculations and again, it's hard to say how this is gonna impact people when they make a decision based on the cost of the garages, but I would think that it would be somewhere around two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand minimum added to the program from that, but it could be considerably more if people do tend to stay to the, you know, eight, nine, ten hours because they are long-term facilities. So I, I think it'll be very positive and my goal when I was presenting and talking to L J. and Tavris is we wanted to try to get something to help people want to go down to the beachfront to support the businesses as well, and I think that gives you this overall program.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Worth, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. L J. and John and Tavris, welcome. Congratulations. Good luck. Mr. Hanson, could you describe to us offseason free parking on, on Atlantic Avenue? Does this, how does this work with that and does this change any of that?
This, what we're proposing today, I'm not, we're not proposing a change to the offseason. There is separate from this, a work group that is working on the capital improvements to Atlantic Avenue. There have been some discussions about what on-street parking looks like moving forward, and there have been discussions about whether that will be a year-round proposal or not a year-round proposal. Our recommendation is if it's year-round, we would, we would propose to eliminate the offseason free parking on Atlantic Avenue, but that still remains to be seen. I just wanted to put it out that that's a conversation, but we're, that's not part of this proposal today.
Just to clarify, offseason parking in a parking deck is free or is it, do you pay?
In a parking deck, there is no offseason. We pay, we pay year-round in parking decks. That's correct. In the, in the surface lots, though, we do not pay between November first and April first.
Hey, anybody else? Amelia?
And thank you all so much. Welcome. This whole idea will be good for all districts as we have people who are coming, you know, whether it's District Four or along these areas, that now we have an incentive to come down to the oceanfront. As many of them think, well, it's off. And we're working for having, not just on-offseason, but year-round. This will be good and we'll ask our communications office to share. This will be good, and we'll ask our communications office to share this, to explain to people, you know, how it works. And nowadays, a lot of people, you know, technology savvy. Thank you for coming up with this, because it will benefit all districts.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's really creative, the turnover issue. So I think that's a way to not limit access to parking per se, to incentivize moving, to say, you can stay here, but you'll have to pay more and more, and hopefully that will motivate people to only use it for an hour, two hours, then keep the spots open. So I think that's a really creative way to try to address that issue without denying access to spaces, so I just want to thank y'all for thinking this through.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You know, I tell you what, this is, I think, a very good presentation, and, you know, as Rosemary often said, we want people from all over Virginia Beach coming to the oceanfront, and I think this would help. And the other thing is, you know, we, over the last couple of years, have become more and more of a year-round destination. You know, the, hopefully the shoulder season and the winter season will be known as warmer seasons, you know, with the, with the bringing on the dome and the surf park and, you know, a number of the activities, and, you know, certainly the Sports Center has been, you know, very popular. And then, you know, I think there's going to be a new energy, you know, right around, you know, the 20th Street area that we haven't had before. So, but once again, I think as we're looking forward, you know, this is something that's needed at the time to accommodate, you know, what we've, what we've been working on and what we have accomplished. Thank you very much, LJ.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
We got a whole bunch of folks for this one.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we want to brief city council on really probably the biggest portion, probably one of the biggest projects, that's including our current flood protection program. And we're at the, we're at a point now where we have a guaranteed maximum price. In order to move forward with the project, we need to move funds from other projects that aren't ready for construction at this time, knowing that we'll work on the budget, work in the future budgets to re, to refund those projects. But we're bringing council, updating where we are with the mega bundle projects, and also to talk to council about where we are from a funding standpoint. The goal with this briefing is to let council know that we want to bring forward a ordinance to transfer funds so we can move forward to executing this contract, so we can get this project really kicked off and started. So the next question here will be our city engineer, Tony Utterback, and she'll brief city council on the mega bundle and where we are at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. He just gave most of my presentations. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Styles, Mr. Dehaney. I'm very happy to be here today to present to you on funding the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes Mega Project. I have with me Kevin Chatalier, I have with me Mike Monday, I have with me Mitch Rubin, and LJ Hanson. So why are we here today? This is very exciting news. The Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes Design Build Project, or the Mega Bundle, we are affectionately referring to it as the Mega Bundle, has reached a major milestone. We've been working a year and a half to get to this point, and we have received the guaranteed maximum price proposal from the design-build contractor in late October. So since then, we've been negotiating that final price with the contractor, and we received the final price just recently. Now, the final price does exceed the available funding on these projects, as Mr. Manager stated, but we do have a plan to put forward, but we do need an ordinance in order to transfer funds from other projects to do that. This is consistent to what we've had to do previously on roadway projects where we needed to move funding from other projects. For example, the Shore Drive Phase 3 roadway project, we had to move funding from Centerville, and for, in order to award the contract for Elbow 2B and 2C, we had to move funding from Indian River 2A, 7A and 7B. So I'm going to start today by giving you a history of the project by going over the purpose of need and an overview. Then I'm going to talk about the design-build project delivery method that was chosen. I'm going to present to you what the guaranteed maximum price proposal is, and then Kevin will give an overview of the program funding plan, and I will come back and talk about next steps. So the purpose of need of the projects. Most of you recall the tragic storms that occurred back in 2016, where we had three back-to-back rain events. The first one was Tropical Storm Hermine, who, which dumped six and a half inches of rain in three days. Two and a half weeks later, Tropical Storm Julia came and dumped 10 inches of rain in three days. And then the culmination of those two storms ended with Hurricane Matthew the weekend of October 9th, which dropped 14 inches of rain in 20 hours. The back-to-back storm events caused catastrophic flooding in Virginia Beach, but particularly in the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes area, where there were over 800 homes that reported flooding. And this is some of the photos from that tragic event. So following that, in 2017, city council appropriated the funding for us to begin preliminary engineering in the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes area. We hired a consultant to conduct a detailed engineering analysis to determine a specific program of flood protection projects and measures for the project area. Those studies were completed in 2019. So in order to understand the area, the project area you see here, we needed to understand the challenges that affect this area. So we needed to understand how the area drained. So the project area is actually divided into two, and Rosemont Road splits the area in half. The Windsor Woods area is on the west side of Rosemont Road, and it drains through Thalia Creek to the north into the Lynn Haven Inlet and out into the Chesapeake Bay. To the east side of Rosemont Road is the Princess Anne Plaza area that drains through London Bridge Creek, north into the Lynn Haven Inlet, and out into the Chesapeake Bay. Now, the Lakes portion of the area actually drains south through West Net Creek, down into the North Landing River into Back Bay. These same drainage patterns or natural drainage areas are also pathways for tidal flooding, as you can see here. So in the south, it's not this typical tidal flooding, but the wind tide does push water up into this area. So these are the challenges and issues that were identified in those 2019 reports. The elevations in the area are low. In fact, the area is practically a bowl, and most homes were constructed on a slab at grade, as you can see from this picture here. As I just mentioned, the area is tidally influenced, and studies show that there is an increase in frequency and the severity of storms. The infrastructure in these neighborhoods is relatively old, was built in the 60s. In some areas, the storm drains are inadequate or even nonexistent, and there's a lack of stormwater storage in Windsor Woods and in Princess Anne Plaza. So this is what we call our heat map. The areas in blue are the highest elevations, and the areas in red are the lowest elevation. So you can see the challenges here with the areas in red being in the highest risk for So these are the major program elements that were identified in these preliminary engineering reports. And it was determined that there was a combination of complementary infrastructure improvements that needed to be made to achieve flood protection. They were divided into two phases. The first phase focused on structural flooding, and the second phase will focus on street flooding. Phase 1 are the projects that we are doing today. So the early implementation projects were a group of projects, and I'll show you those in just a second. They were early projects that we could get designed and construct on their own, they could stand on their own, and they helped with some localized flooding. The tide gates and barriers that are shown here, these are meant to hold back the tide, as I just showed you the influence of that. They are in three locations in these areas, and there is two large-capacity pump stations that are going to be needed to pump the rainwater out during a storm event. And then Windsor Woods and Princess Anne Plaza have a lack of stormwater capacity, so we're going to build two, we have two projects to address that. And then the storm pipe improvements are not funded, they will be a later phase of the flood protection program, and they will focus on neighborhood storm pipe improvements. So this is a map showing all the improvements recommended in, for Phase 1. You can see the different neighborhoods. To the left, in green, you have Windsor Woods; in pink, you have Princess Anne Plaza; and then in the blue, the Lakes. So starting in Windsor Woods, the projects in green are the ones that are completed. We have the Windsor Woods Tide Gate, the South Plaza Trail and Old Forge Red Lion Project, and the Clubhouse Road and Storm Drain Improvement Project. Those were those early implementation projects, where we constructed large stormwater pipe infrastructure. And then the remaining, oh, and then the Bow Creek Stormwater Park, Phase 1, I can't forget that one. That's currently under construction now, and that's going to provide the much-needed storage in the Princess Anne Plaza area. So the remaining projects are part of the mega bundle, and there are seven of them. Starting in Windsor Woods, next to the tide gate, we have the Windsor Woods Pump Station and Flood Barriers. Also in Windsor Woods, we have improvements at Thalia Creek and Lake Trashmore, and then moving over into Princess Anne Plaza, we have North London Bridge Creek Tide Gate Pump Station and Flood Barriers. And then moving down into the Lakes area, we have a gate that will be constructed along Holland Road, and along Lynn Haven Parkway, we have the South London Bridge Creek Channels Tide Gate and Barrier. So I'm, now I'm going to give you a brief overview of each of those projects and what they do. These are the seven projects, starting with Windsor Woods. This is a graphic of the pump station that is proposed here. It's a large-capacity pump station that will be able to pump 800 cubic feet per second. There will be a control building, as you can see here, and you can also see the existing tide gate that was completed. Now, it's important to note that this is the permanent pump station. This will replace those temporary pumps that are out there today, working with the tide gate. It will also include a flood barrier along South Boulevard. These will be low-height earthen berms and concrete walls to protect from any stormwater coming around the outside. And then we will improve Thalia Creek by installing culverts and channel improvements between Lake Trashmore and Lake Windsor, so we'll be able to pump them down to provide storage for Windsor Woods. So the idea here is the tide gate is closed during a low-tide event, we're able to capture storage behind the gate and pump any stormwater out over the gate. So in the Princess Anne Plaza area, we have a larger stormwater pump station. It's able to pump 1,400 cubic feet per second. You see here the rendering showing the control building, the location of the pump station, and there is a tide gate that will cross North London Bridge Creek, and there will also be flood barriers adjacent to North London Bridge Creek to keep the flooding from coming around the outside. Same concept, pumping down in order to provide storage behind the gates. And then finally, in the Lakes area, we have three projects, starting with the picture you see here. This is the South London Bridge Creek Channels and Tide Gate Project. We're going to construct a tide gate on London Bridge Creek, as you can see, and we're going to separate the Lakes and the Green Run canals to provide additional storage, and we are going to construct flood barriers along Lynn Haven Parkway. And this is going to be a system of low-height floodwalls, berms, and gates. And then finally, at Holland Road, we're going to construct a tide gate on the west side of Holland Road. So in 2018, all of these projects were estimated to cost approximately $290 million. Now, that was based on very high-level conceptual plans and what's called a Class 4 estimate. And a Class 4 estimate is meant for budgeting purposes only, and it can actually range from plus 50% of the actual cost of the project. Completing the projects would have taken nearly 40 years with the funding levels that was provided by the stormwater utility fee. So we had to prioritize the projects based on the benefit that they provided. So the first project that we funded was the Windsor Woods Tide Gate, and as you know, that's constructed today. We have already used it and tested it in storm events to keep the tide out. The second project that was funded was the Bow Creek Stormwater Park, also under construction today, and has also provided benefit this past summer during the storm events. But moving ahead, when we received funding from the bond referendum, that allowed us to move ahead with the rest of the projects in the program. But we needed to come up with a strategy to streamline and expedite the design and construction of the projects. So we looked at using a single-prime contractor and project bundling, and this was actually put into a resolution when the bond referendum passed. So this is the design-build project delivery method that we chose. It's called progressive design-build project delivery. So why progressive design-build? So I've put some, I have a comparison chart here with some letters or words in bold to compare the progressive design-build delivery method against the traditional design-bid-build method. The progressive design-build method is a collaborative, single-contract with one design-build team. It is selected based on the best value. It includes open-book pricing where the total cost of the project is negotiated. There's a high level of collaboration, there's a lower risk of change orders, and there's a consistent owner participation throughout the entire process. And it is faster due to the concurrent design and construction activities, whereas the traditional design-bid-build is a linear sequential process. There are separate contracts for the designer and the contractor. The contractor is selected based on a lowest, the lowest competitively obtained bid. There is minimal collaboration with the city, there's a higher risk of change orders, and the owner has less involvement during the construction phase, and it's also longer due to the fact that it's sequential in nature. So how did we choose the design-build team? The progressive design-build procurement process is a two-step process. The first, and that's according to state code, the first step includes selecting the team, and it's based strictly on their qualifications. And that involved issuing a request for qualifications or an RFQ for the teams to submit their statements of qualifications, or SOQs, where they submitted their experience of a project similar in size to ours, and they submitted their, 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 I'm sorry, their experience on a project similar to ours, and also their project team. So those teams were evaluated, and we shortlisted the top three teams. The step two involved selection based on best value. We issued a request for proposal, for technical and price proposals. The Phase 1 price proposal only included the cost for design and the indirect costs. We scored the proposals based on their design, their technical approach, and their price, and we selected the best overall value. So this is a flow chart that shows the two-step best value selection. The process to get from A to H actually took a year. We issued the RFQ in January 2023. The statements of qualifications were submitted in February 2023. The proposals and the, we issued the RFP in April of 2023, and then we met with the teams and had interviews and evaluations, and we selected the team in September of 2023. We executed the contract in January of 2024. So since January of 2024, we've, we've been collaborating with the design-build team to get to the 60% plans that we are at today and the GMP proposal. So this is where we are today. So this is the team delivering the mega bundle. Starting on the owner's side, we have Jacobs, who is our flood protection program manager. They have been instrumental in helping us with the design-build process. Their expertise in this field has been invaluable. Then we have Michael Baker as our owner's advisor. They've been working with us on this project since 2017. And then RK&amp;K, they are our owner's independent cost estimator. Now, this is unique to the design-build project. An owner's independent cost estimator provides a third-party evaluation to validate the contractor's proposal, to make sure that it is fair and reasonable. And we do- And we do have our independent cost estimator with us today. On the design-build team, we have the contractor, Flatiron Dragados, who is teamed with Arcadis, the design engineer. Now, this is not an all-inclusive org chart. There is a whole team behind this group of people that are working to deliver this project. So now, moving on to what everybody's been waiting for, the guaranteed maximum price So the guaranteed maximum price that was presented to us by the design builder is $488.97 million. So this table shows you each of the seven projects, the total cost that was presented to us to design and construct it, the funds available for each project, and the delta. So we have $85.3 million currently available on these projects, and we need an additional $403.6 million to execute the contract. So to give you a history of the evolution of the price, the original estimate at 50% design was $564.9 million. After we progressed to get to where we are today at 60%, the first GMP submittal was $508.5 million, which was a reduction of $56.4 million. Now, that's what we'd expect in a progressive design-build project. We work from 15% design. We value-engineer certain items in the contract. We have design refinements, and we get the cost down. So since then, we've had further negotiations, and we've saved another $19.6 million to get to where we are today at the $488.97 million. So I know you're asking yourselves, how do we know this number is correct? So as I mentioned, our independent cost estimator provided independent estimates at each of the major project milestones and compared them with the estimate the design builder provided each one of those submittals. They also worked together, the estimator and the design builder, to resolve any significant differences. So this independent review was essential. It provided us a way to ensure that risks were minimized while ensuring that project costs were carefully controlled from the start to the finish. And for the final GMP review, our independent cost estimator's estimate for the direct construction cost was within 3% of the design builder's estimate. Now, moving on to the proposed funding plan. So we will need to transfer funds from other projects in the flood protection program to fund the gap. The projects chosen for transfer were based on available funds on these projects and also the expected delivery dates. So starting with the Sandbridge-Newbridge Intersection Improvement Project and the Marsh Restoration Project, both of those projects are currently delayed due to environmental permitting, so that funding right now is available. The Central Resort Projects, we are currently developing the RFQ to advertise that project for design-build for release in early January. So we don't need the construction funding at this time. For Punggol Ferry, we are in the environmental process. We are preparing an EA, and we already have those activities funded. That EA is expected to be completed by the summer of next year. For Church Point-Thurgood B&amp;P and Conventance Improvements, right now, we're working on a Phase 1B. It will begin design in January. It's not expected to go to construction until 2029. For West Net Creek Bridge, we are wrapping up the preliminary engineering report and coordinating with the Army Corps of Engineers on the preferred alternative, as this project is included in their coastal storm risk management study. For the Lake Bradford-Chub Lake Pump Station and Outfall Project, the design-build team is under contract, so that funding has already been encumbered. And the GMP for that project is not expected until the third quarter of 2027, so the remaining funding here is available. And the last project, First Colonial Road-Oceana Boulevard Drainage Improvements, is in construction now, so what you see here is available on that project. So the upcoming FY27 CIP will restore the funding to these projects to the greatest extent possible, but it will be strictly based on the schedule of those projects. We are also proposing appropriating new funding from stormwater revenue bonds and general fund balance. The funds shown there for those two sources will be applied to the one project in the mega bundle that is not supported by the bond referendum. That's the South London Bridge Creek Tide Gate Project. And then also authorized unappropriated charter bonds and public facility revenue bonds that will be repaid by the Flood Protection Program Fund. So that gets us to the $403.6 million needed to award the contract. Other items that are not included in the GMP are shown here, and these are all costs that we need to cover. They include the owner's advisor and construction site representative when we start construction on these projects, contingency for us. We have some costs for some reinterment costs for a cemetery located at the North London Bridge Creek Pump Station. We are anticipating some private utility adjustments. We have some water and sewer relocation at the South London Bridge Creek Tide Gate. We need to do some channel dredging at Thalia Creek, and some stormwater inlet improvements in the Chimney Hill neighborhood. So those total $46.73, and those will be programmed as needed in the upcoming six-year CIP. So this table, you may look familiar to you. This was presented to you in September by Lisa Pika with Jacobs. This is when she presented that the total program cost was $1.55 billion. So the Windsor Woods-Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes mega bundle is included in the master project here for Windsor Woods-Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes. But also included in that number is the early implementation projects, the Bow Creek Stormwater Park, and the Windsor Woods Tide Gate. So in September, she presented a total cost for everything in the master project, $803 million. Today, with the guaranteed maximum price proposal, we are now at $761 million for that master project, which brings us to $1.5 billion. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who's going to talk about the funding plan.
Hey, Kevin, how you doing?
Good, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So Tony covered a great deal in that presentation, talking about the mega bundle, and there are certainly some big numbers and a lot of history related to this project. So City Council might recall, last year about this time, we did a presentation by committee, where a section of it, I came up and I talked about the long-term funding plan and strategy associated with the flood protection program and what tools City Council put into place. So I'm going to continue that on the back of Tony's presentation, talk about some of the components that are in the funding plan being proposed and will be included in the upcoming ordinance for City Council's consideration. Starting with, I'm going to back up briefly, and before I get into the bond referendum and the charter bonds associated with that. In the funding plan that Tony covered, you might see down towards the bottom, the general fund fund balance of about $14 million. Prior to the adoption or the approval of the bond referendum, years ago, City Council established a real estate dedication, the equivalent of 2.5 cents of the real estate tax rate, that is utilized to support general fund operations for stormwater purposes, mosquito control, some other engineering purposes. And so what this number here represents is a restricted portion of the general fund fund balance that has lapsed over the several years and has accumulated. And so it's a rolling number of about $14 million that is specifically earmarked for stormwater purposes. So what this will be doing is appropriating that from the restricted portion of the general fund fund balance. So whenever, if approved by City Council, it will not be reducing the fund balance as a percentage of next year's estimated revenues. Instead, it's from the restricted portion. So I just wanted to back up and follow up on that. As everybody's familiar and aware, flood protection and stormwater has been the number-one priority for City Council for several years, since Hurricane Matthew really brought it to light. And City Council's been putting tools in place ever since that point in time to help us get to this point in time. So little bit of additional background in terms of the funding mechanisms put into place. After the adoption or the approval of the bond referendum, City Council authorized and appropriated $567.5 million of general obligation bonds or charter bonds. That was to be supported long-term with the real estate tax dedication of equivalent of 4.1 cents. And so that is, in fact, was put into place and remains in place today. One of the changes that happened at that point in time is, in lieu of raising the real estate tax rate of that equivalent amount to dedicate it for that purpose, instead, City Council at that time opted to absorb that through year-over-year assessment growth and dedicate that assessment growth for this purpose. So at that point in time, there's also, it was a transition period. So stormwater up to that point in time had been backed by the equivalent residential unit or the ERU, and the revenue specifically generated from that. So there's a lot of projects that were already underway, and at that point in time, they were bonded, they were funded through the stormwater ERU. And you might recall that Tony had mentioned one of the specific projects within the mega bundle, one of the seven, the South Lakes Project, I believe, was one of those original projects funded by the ERU, and so it will continue to be funded by the ERU throughout the construction period and remain funded as such. So everything else has been added to the FPP or the flood protection program since that point in time, has been supported through the funding plan put in place to support the bond referendum. So the last bullet point on here, and this might be the most important bullet point on this slide, is that in order to continue the funding plan as put into place, it's critical that all the bonds are issued. All $567.5 million are issued by 2031. If those bonds are not issued, then we don't have the legal authority to retain those bonds. We have to remove those from the budget, and that will put a big hole in the flood protection program and the funding plan put into place for it. There was an additional resolution that was approved by City Council post-approval of the bond referendum. And so I typically don't read, however, I can't summarize it any better than the verbiage as what was in the resolution. So it reads, "In furtherance of the long-term flood mitigation needs of the city, the general obligation bond and capacity created by the retirement of the debt authorized by the November 2021 referendum shall be reserved exclusively for the issuance of bonds to finance Phase Two of the city's flood mitigation program and subsequent sea-level rise projects." So the real estate dedication that we were previously talking about, the 2.5 cent general fund dedication, as well as this mechanism here of retaining the retired bonds and charter bond capacity generated through the referendum, is really the long-term financing plan that we're talking about. So to try to demonstrate what that previous verbiage I read, talking about the resolution and retaining the charter bond capacity, looks like, here's a slide that I can perhaps quickly work through to try to familiarize everybody with what this will look like. So each year, the city, we do this as a part of the budget process with our city's charter bond or general obligation bonds. So per the charter, the city's allowed to, whatever the calendar year retirement of debt is for that year, the city's allowed to authorize that plus $10 million in a given year. So the whole concept behind doing that same principle and initiative and following the same practice with the flood protection program, this is a debt table that would show how this calculation would work. So in 2024, we had an issuance of the, for the flood protection program bond referendum of $118 million. Each year that that debt service payment is made, there is a retirement of about $5.9 million of their original principal. And so that's lockboxed, if you will, to be retained, specifically to be re-appropriated for the flood protection program in a future point in time. So the visual of $118 million, each year, the $5.9 million throughout the 20-year debt service payment associated with that, it accumulates over a period of time to be repurposed. And you can actually see that at the very bottom of the table here, the cumulative unallocated bond authority, you can see the $11.8 million there at the end of FY25-26. That is a component of this proposed funding mechanism that Tony had on the previous slide to be appropriated to help put towards the awarding the contract, having the funds in place to award the contract for the mega bundle. So that's one issuance, an example of that, but that was the first issuance. There are several more issuances to come, which will result in additional principal retirement occurring each year and therefore creating additional capacity to be appropriated at a future point in time. So trying to take a snapshot and look at what that might be like in a proposed budget or in future budgets, this is just a capacity example. So working left to right, obviously, the $567 million that was the appropriations to date, which is the ATDs. And then FY26, you can see from the second row down, the FY24 charter bond issuance and sale authorize, or excuse me, appropriating that $11.8 million for additional purposes and utilization within the flood protection program. And then the $5.9 million that occurs each year. A future assumed sale is anticipated to occur in FY26 again. Again, this is based on information from last year and the adopted budget. This will be a decision that's really made based on a look at, an assessment by finance and the financial, to have them pour the financial consultants to determine the right timing of these issuances. But for this purpose here, it's a hypothetical, looking at what additional capacity would be generated from a sale amount in FY26 of that level. And then FY28, and so forth, and so on. One thing that will be included in the proposal for City Council's consideration is the appropriation of nearly $64 million in public facility revenue bonds. So in authorizing or approving this, it'll allow the appropriations to be in place to award the contract and begin the constructions to take place. What we can look at over time is the capacity of the flood protection special revenue fund to potentially absorb the debt service associated with the issuance of $64 million in flood or public facility revenue bonds, or that could be a mechanism to modify that or change that means of financing in future years based on the availability of cash within the flood protection or special revenue fund. So I know that I covered a lot as well, and hopefully, I was able to give some clarity or context as to what some of the words were of the, in the means of financing of what Tony was talking about. But I'll be up here to be able to take questions, and I think Tony's going to come back up to talk about the next steps in the closing slide here.
Okay, so in accordance with state code, a public hearing is required in order for us to transfer the funds, as we mentioned earlier. So that public hearing will be held on December 2nd. It was advertised in the Virginia Pilot on November 21st and November 24th. An ordinance for City Council's consideration will be on your agenda for the December 9th meeting. If you so choose to adopt that ordinance, we would like to execute the contract with the design builder and issue notice to proceed in January of 2026. So that will allow us to complete the design of the projects and begin construction in the third quarter of 2026. Now, because there are seven projects, their schedules are staggered, and I'll show you a diagram in just a moment. But the first project that will complete construction or complete design and start construction will be the Windsor Woods Pump Station. And then all construction for all seven projects will substantially be complete in the third quarter of 2031. So this is the overall schedule, and you can see how the projects start and complete at different times. So, starting with the Windsor Woods Pump Station, and then going through all seven projects in the program with the completion date substantially complete in 2031. with the completion date substantially complete in 2031. So, with that, we will take, any questions?
Worth and Rosemary.
This question's for Mr. Chelle and Tony. But can you go back to page 26? So, on this, the top line items there, I understand postponing those and then pushing those out. At some point, you have to spend them, and you save the money there and you apply it to this project. So, at one point in the future, because you still have to issue debt and you have to pay for those, for those $272 million. How far out are you pushing those or are you delaying that? Or I know you're not having to spend it now, but does it affect the schedule?
So, the projects, we're going to appropriate funding to the projects as they're needed. So, that's why I was trying to go through and kind of map where the projects are today and why, why the funding that is shown for each of these is available today. We're not taking the funding off a project that's using it right now.
But at some point, you're going to need to spend it in the next five years, so?
Yes, as the schedules need the funding. So, if you're asking the funding question on how it's coming back on, it's going to be appropriated in the upcoming six-year CIP and programmed through the six years based on the schedule for each one of these projects. Right now, all that funding is just sitting on the projects.
So, that segues to the second last question. So, the ordinance that we were, the public hearing and then the ordinance we would have in December would be what, to expand the CIP or to change the CIP, the current schedule?
So, Councilmember Remick, it would be to transfer the appropriations reflected on this off to the mega bundle projects. It would be to appropriate the funds at the bottom of this summary table here. So, it's a combination. It's a transfer. It's an appropriation of new funds. It's actually the appropriation of the new funds which triggered the public purpose or the 1% requirement to have a public hearing add associated with, with this action item. So, and then in terms of the programming, the future years, you're exactly right. The program or the funds will be tied up and secured once we transfer off of this. It'll be tied up and secured to the execution of this contract, which bonds in a future point in time will be issued against. And then retiring that annual debt will create additional capacity to be re-appropriated. And the thinking and the idea is re-appropriate to the projects based on the timeline of when they're needed for that. So, if a project needs design, construction or design on that, then it can be appropriate as such. The other kind of math that's not a visual up here is it's not all of the funds being taken, transferred off of these projects in their entirety. There's still, I believe, close to $80 million that will remain on these projects for public work staff to continue making progress on these. So, it's, this transfer is not bringing the whole flood protection program initiative to, to a gridlock and tying it up in this one initiative.
If I could just say, I think it's a brilliant way to address, you know, what was 567 and now 1.53 or 52 billion. It's just brilliant. And I thank you for your effort, everyone.
Rosemary and Barbara.
Mr. Duhany, I have to compliment you on having the most brilliant staff. Tony, you and Kevin and your team have put together an amazing, very, very complicated presentation. There's a lot of stuff here and I just want to, want to thank you. And as we all know, we, our $567 million with inflation is like almost three times of what the voters approved because prices just kept going up. And through getting grants and doing something like this, if my math is right, which may not be my straw at this point, but it looks like it saves us $76 million. Is that about right?
Oh, yes, you're correct. You're actually correct. Yes. I thought you were talking about.
That was what I wanted to hear. But, and one of the best things about it, and I know you put a whole page on it, is GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. That is so fantastic because so much, you know, we still don't know what will happen with inflation if it continues. We know there's always some inflation, but that will, will absolutely control the prices. And I, I know that y'all do a really good job in delaying a few things, but the delay is not going to really be, I don't think that noticeable from what I hear. Just like the money was taken away from the Croatan sand project, which is now underway and the people in Croatan are so happy. It's fantastic. I've seen it on television. It was really amazing. They had to wait for the sea turtles to hatch and leave and now that's unreal. That was a promise as made. Okay, we're going to take this money away for now, but we're going to, we're going to put it back. And I think that's kind of what you're saying. That's an example of what you're saying is here. But I have to also really give a shout out to Councilwoman Belucci that has, I think this is 100% in his district. And he's worked really, really hard to protect the families and the homes that were under such duress. And we really care and we love our citizens. And this huge, huge financial obligation that we're going to take on shows that how we value everyone with their homes and protecting them for the future so that we continue to have a thriving city. So, thank you so much.
Always well said. Barbara.
First of all, Tony, I want to say you're a great public speaker. I didn't miss a single word that you said. So many folks, I have to really struggle. You're good. You're also good with the financing. But I, I am concerned at these transfers because I look at where these transfers come from. And it's, I know that you all are comfortable that you have got the financing in place to make them happen, but sometimes our folks don't always trust us to that level. So, I do need some future sit-down with the financing staff to be able to assure people that we are just transferring and we're not saying that these projects are not going to happen and so forth. But it also makes me think that if we are kind of behind this much in the projects that we had already put out for referendum, we better not come up with some that we haven't put in this list yet. That means we've got to be very careful with how we do things so that we are not creating other projects that are going to flood. We've got to be mighty careful. And, and I'm not sure that we've reached that level. But a lot of my questions were along the line that Mr. Remick was asking as far as the transfers and being assured that we're going to be able to do this because we're going to have these projects, the Windsor Woods and so forth, done by 2031. But these other projects are much beyond that. And, you know, when we're talking to people who want to know, well, why did you put those in a referendum in as early as you did if we're not going to be able to build those for a long, long time? So, I do have concerns. It's awfully hard to explain all of this to our public. But I, I think we've certainly got to do a better job of not creating more flooding issues. And I'll address that in a little bit, too.
Councilmember Henley, I, I do want to emphasize one thing. And I, I think Kevin touched on this, but I want to say it again because I think this is a really important part of what we're talking about. This is not the totality of the funding from these projects. These projects still continue to move forward. If, if I use Tony's example for the Lake Bradford, Chub Lake pump station, they're still designing. That, that team is doing everything that they're doing. But they're not going to need the 33, 33.7 million, 33.8 million because they're not ready to go to construction until fiscal year 27, which that's what we're going to program that money in so that in fiscal year 27, they're ready to go. That's, that's our plan. That's what we're trying to, to do in the CIP process. Similarly, for the, the other projects, the only ones that are truly delayed are the ones that we're having problems with the environmental issues. And unfortunately, both of those projects are in your district, ma'am, and I appreciate the frustration. But the other projects, we're still trying to move forward to the degree that we can. So, we're not waiting until 2031 to pick up these projects and keep moving. They're still moving and, and some of these projects, our goal is still to execute them as quickly as possible. I just, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. We're just taking the amount of money that we're not using on those projects today and moving that so that the project that we're ready to go to construction, that we have the funding to make that one go to construction. I hope that's helpful.
As long as you're right.
As long as Kevin's right, ma'am.
That's twice you've dodged. Yeah, so, my, my hats are off to y'all. But also, I wanted to say, I, you know, I don't understand the numbers the way my buddy here in Miderite does. But y'all explained it because for the public, I think it's important and I think we need to start doing a better job of this. And I'm going to talk about this in a little while as well. Is, is that the briefs that we got, the, the, the brief and paperwork in our Friday package we got, and then this presentation, it allows me to be comfortable with some very big numbers. And you're balancing it and you just covered it again, LJ. And I think that's the best part about this. Is how we've, you're taking where you can. And, and I don't want to say it's numbers on a page, but, you know, it's a ledger and you're trying to move it across to make it work. And of course, anything could happen. We have another pandemic or something, right? I mean, who knows? But, but as far as the guaranteed, as the vice mayor said, the guaranteed price, there's some really solid parts here that I think will make this happen. And the great part is, is we're getting ready to go to construction. So, we're going to start to see things, you know, and we're going to get the pump station at Trashmore finished so that we don't have that issue anymore. You know, I mean, it's just some wonderful things that were like five years away, you know? So, that's, that's fantastic. And my hat's off to you. And I, I do just want to reiterate, though, that this is not the first we've seen it. We've gotten private briefs on it to make sure we understand it and ask any, you know, in-the-weeds questions. We've gotten the paperwork on Friday and now we've gotten this brief. And I, I feel really comfortable with what y'all are bringing forward. So, thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for your presentation. And LJ, I think that last reiteration that you just did, the way, the way I've always thought about this, correct me if I'm wrong, is this 567.5 million dollars is essentially like a credit, line of credit, right? So, we'll, we'll use it, we'll pay for projects. And then once the debt is paid off, the, the credit line is, remains open for us to use for future projects. So, the money that has been appropriated in the past, you were saying is essentially latent, either capacity or unused capital that is just sitting there, that those projects are actually happening and being designed and under some phases even of construction perhaps or property acquisition. But that money, the, the rest of the money that was appropriated is just sitting there doing nothing while we can go get the rest of this done quicker and cheaper.
Yeah, I also like to add, Councilmember Schuman, you're correct, but also the, the proceeds that, that 4.1 pennies generates more than the 567 because it grows up with the assessment each time, right? And the big thing that we're trying to dance and protect is our credit rating, right? You know, so, we could be irresponsible and leave the money on these projects and then just come to council and say, we want to take additional bond capacity and load up that way. But then, when we got to explain that to the rating agencies, they're going to say, well, this project isn't out there and you don't do, you don't need that till 2030 something. So, why are you doing that? Why don't you take the resources that you're not going to use for another six years and move it forward, right? That's the best way to preserve our rating, our, our overall rating, keep our AAA, which allows us to get that cheaper, you know, and kind of keeps the city in a solid financial footing as well, right? So, those are some of the things that we're doing in the background while we, when we make these decisions and bring these recommendations to you. Because as Kevin mentioned, it's not just us, it's the finance department, but also Davenport, our financial advisor. And they go to market several times a year for several different clients. So, they're always advising us on what's the best way to navigate our, our CIP and also our bond and debt limits. But LJ, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
The only thing I wanted to say is that, Councilman, I, I agree with you. This is, this is our belief of the most responsible way to make use of this money. We, we want to put it to use in construction rather than letting it sit there and depreciate due to inflation. If, if this money just sits on a ledger line item and we're not ready to go to construction on that project, it makes a lot more sense to bundle it into a project that we're ready to go to construction and put it to use. I think that's what the taxpayers are expecting.
Okay, Amelia, and then Stacy.
Now, I want to thank you for this project. It really sounds doable. I like the way, the way I'm seeing it is as though it's staggered. So, even though you have all construction completed by 2031, you've already finished Windsor and you're going on to the next and so forth. Just touch base on that if I'm on the right track.
Yes, ma'am. So, as I mentioned, the Windsor Woods pump station is going to start, but we're also going to have other projects starting that are staggered. So, you're going to have one project starting construction and maybe six months later, there's another one starting. So, they're all staggered, but the final completion date is 2031. And then also to note, as like for the pump station, as it's completed or substantially completed, where we can actually accept it as a city, we can take it over and start using it. So, even though the rest of the program is still under construction, as the projects are completed, we can accept them into our maintenance program and actually use them.
Thank you for working towards reducing what that original estimate was, finding other pockets to reduce it. And important what our city manager mentioned about our AAA. Keep that in the pot. There's a plus for other constructions and so forth that will come in the future. Thank you so much.
Very impressive. I know that's a lot of hard work and great results. Just a question in the weeds, I guess, that the, there was $80 million available in the, in this mega bundle and the funding of the mega bundle. So, whatever the source of that is, this, this program will, 85 million. So, this, the transfer of these funds will fully fund this mega bundle, the 588. So, the funds that were being deferred into these seven projects, those will go elsewhere now? Or will you continue the fundings?
So, Councilmember, maybe, maybe I could try. So, all these projects, except for the one I had made note of, the, the South Lakes project, were, the appropriations in place were the, a portion of the $567 million bond referendum. So, that is that $85 million that's already on the projects. So, it's a component of them or is already, bond referendum charter bonds are already allocated to that. The bulk of the remainder amount to be transferred, well, the transfer amounts to these is also the 270-something million dollars, I believe, is from the bond referendum as well. That's part of the $567 million. The other components, the new appropriations, those are new means that weren't a part of that charter bond, the bond referendum charter bond amount. Does that make sense? If I may, though, what, talking about that in, in light of the remainder of city council's conversation that you were just having, I know everybody's excited about getting the contract there and, and the future. From a financial standpoint, this is in the weeds. I'm excited about it as well because if you recall, one of the things that I had said is the last bullet point on this, if all of the $567 million is not issued by 2031, then we don't get to retain that for the Phase II or to replenish and put back towards these projects and reappropriate in the future. That's just charter bond capacity that's lost. So, we would, it'd put a big hole in the overall financial plan. So, the fact that such a significant contract is on the verge of, of being awarded and construction beginning, that's a sizable amount that I think finance is going to be happy to see, to take to the market and issue that, which will then result in a, the retirement of that debt that we can then funnel back into for future year appropriation.
Huge. Okay, Patrick.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, we typically. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we typically, each year towards December, we really give City Council a financial overlook or outlook of the city. Next week, Davenport, who is the city's financial advisor, is going to come and give City Council the typical briefing we give you, so you can kind of see where we are as it relates to our debt metrics and our debt capacity and things like that, you know? So it would have been good, because of the time we weren't able to have Davenport come and give you that presentation before this, because that would have kind of helped you see where all of this fits in the big picture. But as we show you all each year, we always try to give you a sense of where we are with the flood protection program and what's it looking like, what it's generating over a time horizon, to kind of calm the fears and the concerns about how we're going to get there and how we're going to navigate these inflationary cost increases. It's a big, it's a big hurdle, it's a big, big challenge, but it's workable and it's doable if we be patient and we maintain the financial rigors that the City Council and the public has expected from us.
Hey, anybody else? You know, let me just say, you know, with this situation, sometimes, yes, I do repeat myself, but it's worth repeating. This, again, is another one of our confrontations with reality. This is something that we had to deal with. You know, Hurricane Matthew back in '16 was a game changer in many, many ways. You know, we did a total pivot to the point where this topic we're talking about is our highest priority, closely followed by public safety, schools, and attainable housing. And, you know, I will say again, at that time, I was doing a lot of home care PT. I was in a lot of neighborhoods, and I remember the devastation, and once again, I'm seeing people's entire lives under the front lawn. There are memories on the front lawn. You know, the amount of damage that was done is real. And I remember at the time, we made a commitment that we were going to be doing something extremely proactive. You know, I remember we had a neighborhood in my district when I first got elected, it was, you know, flooded, you know, right by Lynn Haven and Indian River Road, you know, brought up free food. And, you know, we did a quick, you know, pump station, I think it was $6.5 million, and it took care of the problem. And we're going to take care of the problem, and I think we made a commitment to take care of the problem. But the one thing I will also repeat, we have absorbed into our budget the 4.17. Okay? And I think that's very important that we remember going forward. And, but once again, the commitments are going to be there. And, you know, once again, and once again, I'll repeat myself, we're going to be paying for floodwater in perpetuity. And, but once again, you know, the old Marine Corps motto, innovate, adapt, overcome, and I think this is what you did in today's presentation. Kudos to all of you. Thank you. All right, moving on.
Five hundred million dollars. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this time, I will be joined by Ms. Alcott for giving the City Council a pending planning items briefing. It'll be for the items that's coming up at your forthcoming City Council meetings.
Sure, some of the ideas will bring in some new revenues to pay for some of the stuff we just talked about.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager just said, I'm going to briefly run through the planning items for consideration at your December 9 hearing. So there are a total of 10 planning items on that agenda, two of which are bundled into one project, and all of these items were heard at the November Planning Commission hearing. So looking first at item one, this is a subdivision variance request for 2453 Beaufort Avenue in District Nine. The applicant seeks to subdivide the existing parcel to create two single-family residential lots. The proposed lots meet all dimensional requirements of the R 7.5 residential district, except for conceptual lot A1, which is outlined in blue on the slide, which has a street-line frontage of 50 feet instead of the required 60 feet. Since the frontage of a lot is determined by the nearest point from which legal access is available, the conceptual, or the street-line frontage for conceptual lot A1 is measured along the Chub Lake Avenue Paper Street, which is that 50 foot that is in the red text there. I will note, however, that access to both lots is proposed from Bradford Point Lane, which is to the left on the slide. Since this property is located within the Shore Drive corridor overlay, the item was presented to the Bayfront Advisory Committee Commission, who voted to support the request. As there is no plans to improve or extend Chub Lake Avenue in this area, and as the existing parcel is also deficient in terms of street-line frontage, and the adjacency to a paper street is an unusual hardship, staff does find that the grounds for hardship needed to grant a variance to be met in this case. We have recommended a condition to require a one-foot no ingress egress easement along Chub Lake Avenue in this area to prevent any future access from Chub Lake Avenue. We have not received any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item two is a request for a change in nonconformity for an existing single-family dwelling at 2618 West Chub Lake Avenue. The property is zoned R 7.5, lies within District Nine, and also within the Shore Drive corridor. The proposed improvements to the house include enclosing the existing front porch to create a shed, removing the existing utility shed, which is currently located within the right-of-way, relocating and raising the HVAC and pool equipment, relocating the front door, modifying the roof pitch, and constructing a two-story building addition, as well as redeveloping the pool area. The home was built in 1968 and is nonconforming to the city's current setback requirements, as well as the parking requirements for a single-family dwelling. The existing dwelling encroaches more than 30 feet into the front yard setback and encroaches just slightly into both side yard setbacks. Similar nonconformities are seen throughout this neighborhood. With this request, the applicant is seeking approval for a 1.67-foot front yard setback instead of the required 30, a 1.7-foot eastern side yard setback instead of the required 5, and an 8-foot western side yard setback instead of the required 10. In addition to the dimensional variances requested, the applicant is also requesting permission to have zero onsite parking spaces rather than the required two. This request is consistent with how the property has historically operated since the home was constructed in 1968. As you can see on the image on the slide here, the owners currently park within an unimproved portion of the right-of-way. The proposed improvements to the home do not alter or impact the existing parking areas, and the issue with providing onsite parking, it is significantly limited due to the small lot size, the existing footprint of the home, and then the site topography. The total increase to the front yard nonconformity is roughly 35 square feet. All other improvements either reduce the degree of nonconformity or comply with the dimensional requirements for the R 7.5 district. Staff has not received any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of nine to one. Item three is a request for a modification of conditions related to a short-term rental at 409 24th and a Half Street in District Six. In 2021, City Council approved a conditional use permit for a short-term rental for this property, which included three conditions related to the removal of an existing gravel area, installation of a stacked driveway, and then installation of a hedgerow along 24th and a Half Street. In 2022, the site was redeveloped with a new single-family dwelling. The approved site plan included a BMP and an 18-by-18-foot driveway in the location of the hedgerow required with that 2021 approval. The redevelopment of the site also resulted in the removal of the gravel area. It was determined by our zoning staff that a modification of conditions to remove those three conditions would be required in order for the site to obtain their short-term rental zoning permit, as compliance with all conditions of ACUP are required before that permit can be issued. Three prior zoning complaints were received for the site relating to parking issues, specifically parking within the street. The first complaint was unsubstantiated by staff. The second was referred to the Virginia Beach Police Department, and then the third did result in a notice of violation. However, that was resolved when the vehicles were moved. I do want to point out that there are no physical changes proposed to the site with this request. This property has been rented as a 30-day-plus rental since September of this year. Four parking spaces are required since the short-term rental has four bedrooms. Three of those spaces are provided onsite, and then the applicant does lease one space at the 25th Street parking garage, which is just east of the site. We have not received any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item four is a request to conditionally rezone a 14-and-a-half-acre parcel from AG1 and AG2 to conditional R10 for a parcel along Fisher Arch in District Two. The applicant intends to develop a 14-lot single-family subdivision, resulting in a density of just under one unit per acre. The undeveloped property lies within the transition area and the 65-to-70 decibel noise zone, Sub Area Two. Just over 54% of the site is proposed as open space to include a network of trails throughout the site, which surround the proposed BMP and connect to the existing shared-use path along Fisher Arch, as well as trails within the adjacent Mundon Farms and Heritage Park neighborhoods. The 14 new homes will have a minimum living area of 2,200 square feet for a two-story dwelling and 2,000 square feet for the one-story dwellings. Each home will include a two-car garage and architectural elements as recommended in the Transition Area Design Guidelines, such as front porches, side-loading garages, and gabled roofs. Since the site is located within the 65-to-70 decibel noise zone, Sub Area Two, the project was presented to the City Navy Joint Review Process Group, or JRP, and that was determined to be in conformance with Article 18 of the zoning ordinance. This applicant also appeared before the Transition Area Inter-Facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee, who found the proposal consistent with the Transition Area Design Guidelines and voted to support the request. We have not received any opposition, and the Planning Commission, again, voted to recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item five is a conditional rezoning request for property located along North Lynn Haven Road in District Three. The property is currently split-zoned, with the front portion zoned B2 and the rear portion zoned O2. The applicant is requesting to rezone that rear portion, which is outlined in yellow on the slide here, in order to permit additional uses, such as an eating and drinking establishment within an existing vacant tenant space. The site does lie within the Lynn Haven SGA and is adjacent to Phase Three of the VB Trail. The site is also located within the greater-than-75-decibel noise contour. There are no changes proposed to the site with this request. Again, the applicant is just seeking to fill a vacant tenant space, and that tenant space is in the building in the western corner of the property. In response to opposition that was received, the applicant did host a community meeting in October. Only one person did attend that meeting. That individual did note concerns related to noise generated from servicing the dumpster onsite. Staff has also received three letters of opposition related to this request with concerns regarding the potential hours of operation for a future tenant, the potential sale of alcohol onsite, as well as noise and lighting impacts on the adjacent residential properties. While we did have one speaker sign up at the Planning Commission hearing, they were not online at the time that this application was heard. In response...
So, one of the conditions is alcohol will not be served?
Did I see that?
Correct. It's a proffer. So the applicant, in response to those concerns, they added additional proffers, they relocated the dumpster, and will provide screening. They have limited the hours of operation. Now, again, all of this is related just to that western half of the property, but hours of operation will be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., prohibiting the sale of alcohol onsite, and then there are proffers that speak to lighting to ensure that the lighting stays onsite and doesn't spill over onto adjacent properties. The Planning Commission did note that this was kind of the type of uses that you wanted to see along the Virginia Beach Trail. They were supportive of the request and recommended approval by unanimous vote. Item six is a request for a conditional use permit for a beauty salon at 4510 Holland Office Park, Suite 507. This is in District Three. The applicant is requesting to continue to operate a beauty salon at the site and bring their business into compliance as they were unaware of the need for the CUP. There will be a maximum of three independently contracted employees, and proposed hours of operation are Tuesday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment only. Staff has not received any opposition to this request. We have received 21 items of support, to include one letter of support from the property manager, and then a petition of support with 20 signatures. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval on their consent agenda. Items seven and eight are two conditional use permit requests, one for an indoor recreational facility and another for an outdoor recreational facility associated with Regent University in District Seven. The proposed complex is located at the intersection of Centerville Turnpike and Regent University Drive. The complex includes an indoor fitness and athletic facility, a main field surrounded by a track, and that field will be able to accommodate various sports, such as soccer, football, lacrosse, and field hockey. There will be a baseball field, softball field, tennis, basketball, and pickleball courts. And this is all to support Regent's hope to join Division III NCAA athletics. A total of 187 parking spaces are proposed to support this use, with additional parking lots being available throughout the campus if it is needed. Staff has recommended that a parking study be submitted and approved by the zoning administrator as part of the site plan approval process, just to ensure that the parking provided can meet the demand. There are several deviations requested with this project. The site is zoned R5D, which limits height to 35 feet, so the complete list of deviations is listed on the slide there. The two largest deviations, one for the Fitness and Athletic Center at 73 feet, and then another for the stadium lights at 90 feet. Staff has not received any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend it approval, with the added condition requiring sidewalk connectivity to the existing side path along Centerville Turnpike, connectivity from the proposed facilities to the student housing located at Jake Seer's Circle, and then connectivity along Regent University Drive. Agenda item nine is a conditional use permit request for a short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Suite, or Unit 1503. This is within District Five. So the applicant is seeking to operate a three-bedroom unit within the Dolphin Run condominium complex. There are two assigned parking spaces associated with this unit. As I'm sure you are all aware, only one space is required for the Dolphin Run condominiums. The site has no prior zoning complaints or documented stays, and there are no current advertisements associated with the unit. We did have one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing, who cited concerns with impacts to the residents of the condos and expressed a desire for long-term versus short-term rentals. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this request. And for this final item, I'm going to turn it over to our zoning administrator, Hannah Sabo.
Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, council. This, item 10 is an ordinance amendment by the city of Virginia Beach to amend Section 105 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to nonconformities. Staff and Planning Commission both recommend approval of this amendment. Section 105 relates to both nonconforming structures and nonconforming uses. A legally nonconforming structure, which is the diagram on the left, is a structure that does not meet the regulations currently, but it did meet the regulations at the time it was built. So, for example, a single-family dwelling that was built prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, but it doesn't currently meet those front yard setbacks. So that would be considered a legally nonconforming structure. The diagram to the right would be a nonconforming use. So that would be a use that is permitted, that was permitted at the time that use was established, but it does not, would not be permitted under the current regulations. So again, for this example, we have a single-family dwelling that was established. The time it was established, it was fine prior to the zoning ordinance, but now that area is zoned I1, so would not currently be allowed to have a single-family dwelling, but it was established prior to the ordinance, so it's considered a nonconforming use. And so in that case, that is a nonconforming use, but the structure is conforming because it meets the setbacks of that ordinance that it's in. So there are, of course, cases where both the structure and the use can be nonconforming. We do have those, so just be aware. But it is a separate structural nonconformities versus a nonconforming use. Prior to May of 2025, variance requests, so a variance would be a request for a relief from a dimensional regulation like setbacks or height. So prior to May of 2025, variance requests for structural nonconformities were heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The state code does give the power to review variances relating to structural nonconformities to the BZA, but there was an interpretation by... to the BZA, but there was an interpretation by the previous zoning administrator of that section of our ordinance in May that did require those variances that related to any nonconformity, including structural nonconformities, to be heard by Planning Commission and then Council. And so, those started to go to Planning Commission and then Council here. So, this amendment would add clarifying language to that Section 105 that would allow variance requests relating to nonconforming structures only. This does not impact nonconforming uses. Those would still go to Planning Commission and Council. But if you have a structure that is nonconforming in the structural aspect only, to go, to be able to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and not have to go to Planning Commission and Council. This amendment is in line with state code, and it's consistent with the zoning division policies. It also provides a path for legally nonconforming structures to become conforming if a BZA variance is granted. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the proposed ordinance amendment. We had one speaker in support at Planning Commission, and Planning Commission and Staff both recommend approval.
Any questions on this one? All right. Hey, thank you. All right, very active afternoon today. Okay, Council, discussion, initiatives, and comments. Work and then Jennifer, and then...
Thank you, Mayor. So, two things. One, recently I had a quarterly meeting, a community meeting, and I really do enjoy these, but I just want to do a shout-out to staff, specifically Drew Langford with the Communications Office. He's helped me from day one, very professional, and everyone else with the City Manager's Office in arranging the venue, the facility, the technology for PowerPoint presentations and everything else. I just want, they're very helpful. I know I'm one of 11. I know there are other community meetings, too. So, I just want to do a shout-out to them. And then, secondly, resort micro-transit has been an issue at the resort. We tried the freebie pilot program. Well, that was somewhat well-received. It was not well-received because of, look at the word, "freebie." It should not be necessarily free. And so, this council has, in my opinion rightly, not accepted that formula or that concept for micro-transit, but we have gotten requests from the RAC Resort Advisory Commission to look at new ways, new technologies, and vehicles, and ways, advertising, and programming. And so, we have not responded to the requests, but I think, I would encourage us to ask, and I've talked with staff about this, Vice Mayor Wilson might chime in as well, that we look at a micro-transit program. Perhaps do, it's free, there's that word again, but it would be free to put out an RFP to see what the world, what the market can provide on micro-transit at the resort, and I ask for your all's support for that.
I think micro-transit is the way to the future. Jennifer?
Yes, mine is more somber. As I know you all have heard, not this weekend, but I think two weekends now, we lost two coaches in Virginia Beach, Coach John White, the head coach from Bayside, and Coach Ray Colston, who was most recently the assistant coach, football coach, at Kimsville High School. So, they both leave behind lives and children, and I didn't get the privilege to know Coach White, but I knew Ray. And I just wanted to just give a brief reflection. So, Ray, I've known since 2004. We met as young adults. We went to the same church, and there were a number of us who just grew up together. So, we met at 18, 19, 20, and then just emerged into our adulthood. And so many of those same people grew, you know, married, started families, serving their community as educators, or started businesses, and we all were touching base over the last week, like, can you believe this? Like, have you heard? Did you hear what happened to Ray? And can you believe this? And the loss is great when you see people like Ray and, like, Coach White, who were doing the good things and the right thing. So, mentoring not only their players, but people across our community, who I think could offer their own reflections of how they impacted their lives. And so, I just wanted to have a moment, just as a body, to just give space to those two coaches who served our communities, and I know Bayside and Kimsville, but even beyond, who are mourning and also reflecting and celebrating the lives that they lived, that we offer our condolences to them, to their wives and to their children, and to the communities of students and everyone else who might be thinking about them today, just to give space for that and to honor the lives that they lived in our city.
Thank you for that touching tribute, Jennifer. Rose, Mayor?
First of all, I support Councilman Remick's request about the micro-transit. It was very successful, actually, at the beach, but we didn't like the cost. It was way too expensive. So, we've seen some things come across our desk, that there are some other ways to do it, the cost, they're much more economical. So, we can reach out and see what those are, and then we can decide if it's something we want to do or not. The other thing I wanted to ask the council is, I think a lot of you may have seen where Norfolk has treated their STRs a little bit differently. They're now, their per-night stay, we charge $2 per night for our hotels, and Norfolk actually does $3 a night. But we're only doing it for STR, just one, like they have one bedroom. And actually, these places can have three, four more bedrooms. And it's not really quite fair, I think, to also to the hotels, that they only, they had to do it for every single room that they rent. So, I'd like to see if you wouldn't mind if we sent it to the RAC to look at, just to see if they might have a proposal on it. And I have some concerns for Sandbridge, because Sandbridge does have some mega houses that could have 10, 13 bedrooms, and maybe that's going too far. But if we could get the RAC to kind of look at that, and, you know, this doesn't affect, really, our locals. It really affects, you know, visitors coming in, and if they're, if they've got one, two, you know, families, and they're renting a lot more rooms, and perhaps it would be more fair to do a... Does anybody have any problem with sending that to RAC to look at?
Why not? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, our micro-transit in your focus action plan today, you talk about, you talk about it as a retreat. You're including direction, if you all adopt that, for us to explore options for council's consideration for micro-transit. And, Mr. Mayor, council asked us about that information on the STR program that Norfolk enacted. We sent council some information. If council is okay with it, we don't mind having staff work with RAC to give council an advisory opinion for its future consideration on, should it adopt such a program, and where it should use those funds?
And I'm so sorry. I meant to mention that you sent a really nice report in our package this week on this, so thank you for that. Everybody okay with that?
Barbara?
Well, you mentioned Sandbridge, and since Sandbridge is automatically, you know, they automatically were in the STRs because of the General Assembly, I would like for them to review any proposal that we have, you know, not just for RAC, but I think Sandbridge is so pretty heavily into that, that they don't have a choice.
Amelia?
Yes, regarding the micro-transit, because you know, we also have that situation with the other, yes, are you going to look at both, or, because this is for the resort and the other, you know, with Bayside and those people who are upset because of the cost, whether we're going to take it away December?
So, we'll go wherever council wants us to go. Typically, RAC just looks at the resort area, but if council wants us to explore micro-transit citywide, we can. The big issue with the program, the micro-transit program that the city council authorized us to participate in with HRT, is that the local match doubles every year.
That's true.
Right? So, it first started out at $350,000, and the council was supportive of it. Then, when it went to $700,000, it came around the time of the budget, and now to stay in the program, it needs to go to $1.2 million, and then it goes up, doubles each year, basically. So, it becomes a thing that is difficult for us to absorb from a budget standpoint, but we don't, if council wants us to, we could explore options for micro-transit elsewhere as well. I mean, obviously, it's not a supporting concrete, you know, it's just really bringing council back information on what would it look like if there was a micro-transit program that may make sense to be in a resort, but also is there an opportunity to expand it in other districts in the city? You know, and council choose à la carte, how it wants to go from there with that information.
It was very successful, and we have a lot of people who just cannot afford getting, whether the hospitals or what, not having that, because it was like $2 for them to pay. So, at least, I'm glad you're going to bring it to the table, so we can look at, look at that area. And then, the other thing I want to thank some of my members, you were there, Josh, and Remick, and who else, Mayor and Patrick, for being supportive for me when I spoke at the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission.
And you did a marvelous show.
Thank you so much. And what it was about was, we had a, had put out a new booklet, besides where the Virginia Beach Convention Center, they helped me with that first one that came out in 2021. Nancy, you will remember. And now, we have this whole, like a booklet that takes us through almost all 16 cities about unveiling African-American history, and how that could be a possibility for having a boost economically, even have a two-day itinerary that we have in that, and people were receptive. And one of the people liked the new technology that we had, the QR code that you could use to visit the different cities. Of course, Williamsburg, then we should use St. James County. So, we're going to correct that, and, oh, yeah, they're very, and Suffolk has already reached back out to see how we can move things forward. So, I think this is something, because I saw it in, when we went on the Hampton Roads Chamber Leadership Exchange, high in Charleston, they're using things that they know from the different African-American history, to have any cookies, to have whatever. So, from the day one, when you go there, you have that feel in the baskets. So, it's the same way that something like this could be used, because we have a rich, very rich history, all the way through Williamsburg and continuum. So, I'm glad that they were receptive to it, and we'll keep it moving. Thank you.
So, I have two things. One is about your task force, and the other is about the COLA. Should I wait for the COLA to you?
We'll do the agenda.
Yep, okay. So, and then I was going to talk about the mayor's task force for the e-bikes. Stacy and I went to that, and it was a fantastic start, too, I think, the e-bike, where we're going to land on that. Staff was well-prepared, Fountain Works was well-prepared, had a lot of staff that were ready, to, ready to answer any question that came up, literally, I think they had thought of everybody. So, it was, that part was very good, and they gave some good presentations. And then, the group that is on the, on the task force is diverse in thought and where they come from, as far as who they represent. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll come back with, they will come back, we will be the liaisons as to bringing it to a good, a good place for what, what we want in Virginia Beach. It's not just the resort, you know, it's town center, it's our neighborhoods. There's little pieces of this that are going to have to come together, and I think that's where, that's where the real work is going to take place. I do think one theme that came out of it was from Captain Westler from the Police Department, was an education piece, and just simply some, simple speed limit signs, saying, hey, this is how fast you're to go on the boardwalk, or town center, some stuff, some past history that we've seen. I'm not, I shouldn't say that'll be in the final, but it was something that was discussed that I thought had some, some good validity, and that very, something simple that might, might help us. So, anyway, just wanted to let you know. Are you still putting people on this? Or you got your...
Mr. Mayor, you said it.
But now, it's out of courtesy to the liaison. Yeah, it was like, you're asking me, I've got a couple... I got somebody from District 1.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I do want to say, and this is your prerogative, right? It's your task force, but you said at 11?
Yeah. Okay. I'll go by my own rule. There we go. As much as I would like to add somebody from the great District of 1, and we're, it's a big group. If you do have a public thing where you invite somebody to come in and try and... Okay, yep, certainly will.
And I, just to add to that, a lot was accomplished. I mean, it was a four-hour meeting, I think a five-hour, almost five-hour.
Yeah, it was a long time.
Yeah, the initial meeting, but I think we have good direction.
Yeah.
And it's a good group, and it's going to, good directions.
I'll give you guys a phone number if you're talking. Okay. Hey, Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. And just thanks to the two of you for taking this on. There's a lot of people I know all over the place who I really am trusted in it. So, Town Hall, District 9, community meeting on Monday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Bayside Rec Center. We're going to be talking about tourism and how it benefits the entire city, explain the tap and the tip, and talk about the new cultural arts funding that we unlocked from the amusement tax, and some pedestrian and traffic safety improvements in the Bayside. And then, lastly, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I enjoy, I enjoy serving with all of you.
Thank you. Barbara?
Since Josh mentioned December 1st, he reminded me, I'm also having a special District 2 session in addition to the regular forum, but this will be on December 1st to really talk about how we go forward with the 10-1 system. When you look at District 2, District 2 is almost, well, I think it's 46% of the city area. We're extremely diverse, extremely large, and I just want to make certain that we are including all areas of the district when we are operating now going forward, because we are very, very different, and I don't want anybody to think it's just the ITA or just the transition area. We are Blackwater and Knott's Island and Sandbridge and everything in between. So, this session is going to be really looking to make sure we're including everybody and how we're going to do it. I'm really interested in hearing what people are expecting of us now that we're going to be a 10-1 system, and we're going to, I think we're going to be operating differently, and I want to know what the people expect. So, that will be our session on the 1st. A couple of other things, well, maybe this is in agenda review, but, okay.
Okay. What's that? What's that, Barbara?
Oh, well, are we, are we doing the agenda review now?
Yeah. Are we ready? Stacy?
On December 17th, our state delegate, Aunt Pharoah Teta, Mike Belucci, and myself are having a joint Town Hall meeting at the Central Library from 6:00 to 7:30. The theme's going to be city, city constitutional officers. So, they're going to be invited to come and talk about what they do, and also some of the city, our city assessor's going to come, talk about what she does and how that plays into city services, so. Looking forward to that. That's a unique kind of a...
Yeah, that's bringing people together when you use that in this conference.
Saying, since we have one, two, three happening right around December, we could get these council members, just send a note to the rest of us, if any of us want to come and listen in.
No, we already have two.
You have two, right?
Yeah, we already have two, sorry. I tried to invite you all to the last one, and I got torn down, so...
Yeah, I think I got to give Amanda a CPR. Barbara?
I was just talking to Amanda.
Okay, agenda review.
Agenda review, well, believe it or not, so far, there are no speakers. And there's a mic night, and there's no speakers. Oh, that's next week? Yes, I'm sorry. There's still no speakers.
So, so, number one, Councilman Hutch, would you want to speak to that?
Yes, yes, thank you. As, as we know, I had put forth what I've referred to as a COLA adjustment, but I've sent the email to you all that I'm deferring it as of, right now, and I just, I typed, I wrote some notes, because I'm going to say a little bit more than what I normally do, so I don't want to mess up. After, after much thought and consideration with both you all and constituents, I've decided to rescind my request for a COLA increase at this time, and...
and constituents, I've decided to rescind my request for a COLA increase at this time and for deferral and ask that the, send it to the Process Improvement, is that the Steering Committee, to take a look at it and see if there's anything to move forward later on. May or may not, but I just wanted to do that. I did want to say the initial decision for me to pursue the COLA came after conversations with people who literally approached me about running for a council or the school board or various things. And then, in my opinion, they were very qualified people who reflect the wonderful diverseness of our population of Virginia Beach. And diverseness is not just race and ethnicity. It was pay and, you know, finances and stuff like that and just walks of life. Mechanics, somebody that worked for one of our large hospitals, just different folks. So I thought, you know, well, there'd be something to look at. People, but people who must work to provide for themselves and their families but could not sustain at the level of, of the money that was being paid to us at this time, I thought was, was reason enough to, to increase that group was to, to raise, raise that money. One, one thing I did want to say is that we are definitely more than a Tuesday evening meeting. And I'll get to that more as far as what I would ask of, of you and the Director of Comms and kind of what I just did a few minutes ago about saying about all our briefings and the different time we spent. We may not become subject matter experts on everything, but I would say just on the flooding project, we probably spent six or eight hours in the last week going over that in addition to what happens on Tuesday. So I just thought that was important. As well for my colleagues and who have served and some that are on here now, is another reason that I felt it was worth bringing this issue forward. We've had, we've had, we've had council members that tried to sustain being on here and then doing a regular full-time job and can't. They couldn't do it. It didn't, it didn't work out for them. So that was one of the other reasons that I thought was a good enough reason to ask for a more sustainable amount, to me. Because just with the demands and, and trying to hold a traditional job, et cetera, what ends up happening when you, when you don't have the money at the right place, you end up, like us, I think there's seven of us that are either retired or semi-retired. I don't, I don't want to put it on anybody that you're totally retired. But I think it's a large portion of us are retired. And not that we don't deserve to be here. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that at all. We all bring different perspectives, different walks of life, different parts. But I don't think that's 100% indicative of what our city is made up of. And so that's, that's, that's another reason, in my opinion, of why I did this. You know, it's been 20 years since City Council has had their, what I would say is a stipend at this point, increased. And then like many other localities, if we're not at, we didn't adjust financially, that was unintentional, right? Like nobody really thought about it, that we were keeping this large amount of people that would be interested in serving but can't. That was unintentional. But now with me pulling it and, and, and from the folks that have responded and that definitely do not want us to do it, it becomes intentional that we are now saying, no, we're not going to make it so that you're able to serve with financially, you know, and with the constraints of having to have what, all that we do. Because I don't think any of us would say that this is a Tuesday only day. I think, I think on the low end is probably 30 hours a week is what I've been able to figure. So I think it narrows the field for what can represent our city. Another point for those that, you know, or have been vocal to remember is by keeping the, the salary slash stipend so low, and this is one of the things that they kind of say at the same time, that we're like, we're in the developers' pockets and stuff like that, which is a total joke. But it makes the candidate more vulnerable to be swayed by campaign contributions. If you were able to sustain it and put some of your own money into the campaign, then you wouldn't be as beholden to anybody. So it's kind of like those that are saying, don't raise it, are also making it where you have to go out and raise money. It's just a, I see it as a way, a way of having to be. And then lastly, for the manager and, and to our Director of Comms, is I do think we should work on some sort of education because there is a definite lack of it. When we, when we, when we get hit on open mic or for a subject, there's so much misinformation that is said to us. And I don't know, it's from this body that we have, we don't key the mic a lot to straighten that out. You know, when they just say something that is, it's not accurate, you know? How do we do that? So I don't know if it's a, and I don't know that it would reach a lot of people. I'm not saying that. But somehow, like we did, like it did today, saying we've had this brief, we've had a personal brief, because it was such a complex issue, that there's really nothing that we don't get. I mean, there's stacks of paper, right? And you read, and I read them. I hope everybody else does, or at least understands it. So I think it's important for us as a body to figure out how, because I think this, this really has merit. I wouldn't have spoke this long if I didn't. And I want to say it again tonight from the diocese. So you're going to hear it again. But is, is that you, to, to get that out there somehow that we can try to educate as to what we really do on almost everything that is brought to us, that a level. And then just the last thing I would like to say, and I do mean this from my heart, is that on my boys' heads, and I don't say this lightly, I was not doing this to get me a pay raise. That never entered my mind. That, this is not where I'm at in my life. So I hope that means to y'all what I mean for it to be. So anyway, thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it.
You know, bring it up during, what you want to talk about during new business.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Stacy?
And I'm not here to debate or not anything, but as far as, I know that's an issue that people bring up, that only retired, only wealthy retired people can serve on council. But to say that seven people on council are retired, I don't, I know you and I, I don't know what Barbara considers her work life to be.
Yeah.
The mayor's still the headling for him.
Yeah, that's right.
The mayor certainly was not retired when he was elected.
Nope.
In his serp. Rosemary certainly was not retired when she was elected and served. And I don't think Amelia was retired when you were first elected.
Right. But I'm retired now, but I work a lot.
I think that's a, I don't know that that.
Sure.
Is a fair comment.
Sure.
Yeah, Jennifer?
Yeah. So to what Hutch is saying, I've given a lot of thought to this as well. And I think the requests, the referral request is to send this issue to PISC for like more information. So some things that I want to know about is, you know, we're talking about the pay bottom, so where it is, which is 28,000 and that it hasn't increased in however many years. So whenever there's change, I always in my mind go back to like the origin story. Why did it start at that rate? And really, more specifically, why is the Virginia Beach City Council structured as a part-time role? So I know broader Virginia politics historically had assumed wealthy land owning men were politicians. So like the General Assembly is part-time, it's $17,000, $18,000 a year because it assumed in its origin story, the kind of person who would run for office could, you know, was doing other things that could afford to be out of work during January because agriculture, whatever, is a different season. So the origin story of Virginia Beach politics, I don't know, but I know that the current conditions are different, just materially different. We're no longer Princeess Anne County. We're the biggest city in Virginia. So I wonder, not only I would like to know, you know, how, why it was originally designed as a part-time role, my question is, does it make sense to continue functioning in a part-time role considering the city has grown in size since Princeess Anne County? But then I'm also curious about what our national peers do because we've, some of us have talked about it and/or perhaps you've just seen local coverage that some of our Hampton Roads neighbors have taken up this issue and have voted to increase the pay of city council salaries and they're smaller in size. So we could compare to our neighbors, but I would be interested in cities that are our peers on a national level. So, you know, our, our demographics, the size of our city, how do they structure their city councils? And I will say, and I usually don't take like issue with, you know, media framing, but for me, there's greater nuance. I haven't enjoyed or appreciated the reporting that city council is voting to increase their salaries because that's not what the vote is. The vote is for the office. So for the office, whoever may hold the seat, whether it's us or anyone else in the future, the kind of work that is required for this seat, what pay is deserved. In the context of, I understand, right? Politicians, like I accept that the role, we are scapegoats, we get blasted, we get, I am a nice person. Even still, I get the, you all suck, you're the worst and ever. And so, you know, we're certainly not in it for the money. But to Hutch's point, it, you know, I'm thankful that I have a position, my employment is flexible where I can show up on Tuesdays. But for someone who may consider, you know, I tell my students, you don't have to have a college degree to run for office. You just need to be a registered voter, have enough signatures, have good ideas and convince people to vote for you. So could it be that there's a 20-year-old, a 21 year-old that's like, hey, you know, maybe I want to put my foot in the race and I'm just getting started. And is it even an option for me? Someone who could be really valuable at this table, but their only decision-making factor to decide not to run is I can't afford it. So these are things as we're discussing it, I, I, it, it's valid that this is a service role. But I also just want to have the reality of it's 2025 and Virginia Beach is the largest city in the Commonwealth. And we are not Princeess Anne County. And yes, we are in district systems, but maybe I would argue even more responsive because of it. How many, you know, town halls, how many respond, how many, even more responsive to our constituents in the district, but in the city beyond. So, you know, I hope that we continue talking about this. I do think we should have done a better job with the public. It's not just kind of right before, and what are y'all doing? And what is it, you know, kind of explaining what we do and the origin story of the seat and why it's part-time to begin with. Should it continue to be part-time is the question I think we have to answer. And for the amount of work that we do, what is a, a fair wage for that? So those are some things I would like the, to be a part of the discussion.
Hey, Rosemarie and Josh.
This has been fantastic dialogue. I really appreciate everything that everyone has said. And I, I think a big part of the problem, being a Dillon Rule state, is it's been controlled by the General Assembly. And we were until 2006, we're 18,000 a year. At that point, they let us go up to 28,000. And so it's 20 years later, all of a sudden, oh, now you can go up to X amount of dollars. And if we had been allowed to do, like our employees, like 2% or 3% a year, I don't think anybody would have cared. The problem was, is we, we were frozen and we, something that we could do about it because of the Dillon Rule and the General Assembly. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of a shame that we couldn't, we can't just do, which we do with our city manager. Our employees got 3%. We gave him and our other employees 3%. And I don't think anybody, and I think Josh pointed out, that would have been $840, you know, which is, say even $100 a month. So I think a big part of the problem is that we were frozen for so long. And I don't know, maybe if you know anybody in the General Assembly, if they could just say, councils and school boards could, could raise the same amount that they're, that they do their employees. Also get retirement.
Yeah.
Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, this has been a great conversation. And honestly, I think that is the whole point of this. The win is, is the conversation that, that we get to have about this because not, not enough people really truly understand what it is we do, or how much time we give. And we enjoy doing it and we're lucky to do it. And, you know, it's a full-time job for me and probably I would guess everybody around this table, you know, 50, 60 hours a week is, is kind of normal. And, and I, I would do it for free. I know each and every one of you would if you could. Because the, the reward is the service. And I mean, this is the most important job I think I'll ever have, other than being a dad and a parent. And I better do it right. All three of them. So, you know, and, and not, not, and people, like I, I think was said, I mean, people have all these, you know, kind of assumptions about who they think we are and, you know, that we're kind of like cartoon characters sometimes, you know, but, but we're real people. And I, I was, if you remember, I was called a wealthy lawyer last week. My wife texted me and she's like, well, that's news. No, I mean, I gave, you know, and we, and this conversation, I think, got set up at the retreat, you know? I mean, I've, I've made a pretty significant sacrifice salary-wise. I'm barely a lawyer anymore. But, you know, but we're, 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 we're in all, we're in it together. And I think it's, I think it's awesome. And, and we weren't pushing for a salary increase. That was another word in the paper that I, I think was, was kind of not accurate. We were really, I think, just pushing to have a conversation about it so that more people can understand us. And, and then, you know, when we had that conversation in the retreat, I mean, there, there was a lot of things that happened since then. There was a shutdown. There was affordability is an issue nationally. And, you know, and each of us has those, those constituents in our district that we, we, we talk to on a regular basis where, or nonprofits that come up to us and ask us for $5,000 or $10,000 that we can't give to. But, you know, here we are talking about 20 times 10. And there's definitely a better way to do it. But, but single member voting districts has definitely changed, I think, the job. And, and, and I would, I would defer to the folks who've served in the prior system, but all I know is, well, you know, the oath we take is to everybody, citywide. We're a little more hyper-focused on our districts now than any of us have ever been, probably because, you know, we, we have to be in their small spaces and we've got to be, we've, we've got to attend the regional stuff and go to the citywide stuff. And we got to go to the picnic and we got to go to the festival and the civic meeting too. So, and it's, I, it's just, again, we can't talk about all of that enough because I think, and, and, and we're out in community. I know we are and people see it. So.
Okay, Work?
I, I'll just quickly, I just agree with everyone. I think it's been a great conversation, discussion. I want to thank Hutch for bringing, having the courage to bring it up. It's, and I hope it does continue. I did side on the side of opposing it at this point, just to have this discussion because there is a lot of pain out there. A lot of folks, you know, we need to pay some of our staff more. And I'd rather have our staff pay, to be honest with you. But all that being said, I, I am full-time on this and I would do it for free if I could. But I am working another job too. And I'm working two jobs and making 80% less, to be honest. And I would continue, and I want to continue to do that. So I think it's a great conversation.
Thank you. Amelia?
And I join in this group, especially with what you mentioned. Councilwoman Rouse, the origin, some people are not able, you know, to afford to be on board. Some people, it's no problem. It's up to why you're doing what you're doing. You should answer that yourself. Am I here just to continue being elected? Or am I here for the people? Those things are important. And to Councilman Hutch, he mentioned about those, because yeah, everybody cannot afford what time is very important. And it is a sacrifice. But one of the important things, if you enjoy what you're doing, if you enjoy serving others, and realize sometimes with service, even all the nonprofits, they do fundraising, they do something to keep everything going. So that's the same way you're looking at it. So I think it's important for us to, education is key. Because as I listened the other day, everything was being repeated, just as though somebody handed a paper. All of you say this. So to me, then you're not really thinking on your own. You're just going with what everybody else said about everybody else, especially our rich lawyer here. But you know, it's passed on about people actually looking at what is being said to say. say, how do I really feel about this? Instead, it's cookie cutter, and we need to get past that and really look at it genuinely. So thank you all, thank you, Hutch.
I appreciate that. Let me say, you know, Hutch, you know, I really appreciate this. And, uh, you know, if I could just give you just a personal, uh, you know, couple observations. Uh, you know, a lot of times, the work, the work we do is like cliff diving. Yeah, if there's time to make the jump, and there's time not to. And it's not, and the fact is, you know, here we are having the conversation, and that's a good thing. 14 years ago, when I started the Process Improvement Task Force, it was exactly for something like this, uh, to bring outside group of people, you can form an ad hoc committee, do it to look at best practices, find out what's going on, uh, everywhere, and, and, you know, then you come up to, uh, you know, a decision that we would be able to take to the public, that would justify any action that we do. You know, that was the intent, we improved the pri-, uh, you know, the, uh, permit process, you know, you know, Pickens had his, you know, share of good stuff along the year. But then, you know, the thing is, you know, the other thing is still, Hutch hit on, you know, we do live in the theater of perceptions, everybody thinks that we're just rolling on money, and, and, you know, we're up on yachts, living it up, and, you know, everything, and, you know, let me, yeah, tell you, that is not true at all. Um, and, you know, I guess, you know, being, you know, uh, the last that large guy, uh, you know, I've been around. And, you know, what I'm going to say now is, you know, something I, I would never have said before, because, you know, there was no reason to say it, uh, but, you know, there's one thing, you know, when you run as a district guy, and I was a district guy for 14 years. And then when you become a mayor, it's a totally different view about what the role is and everything. Uh, I've been informed recently that they calculated that since I've been on city council, I've done over 2,500 ribbon cuttings, uh, ground breakings, and, you know, just showing up and doing stuff. And that takes a commitment, and it takes a commitment, and, you know, don't forget, our spouses make the commitment, too, when we're not there. And I think that's very important, you know, to realize. Um, you know, but, you know, once again, with cliff diving, you know, for years when I became the Centerville rep, I heard about, we're desperate for a Rex sound, and you've heard me say this before, but it's worth saying again. Uh, you know, I actually got to the point where we, we were going to design in 2015, but guess what happened in 2016? Okay? And once again, cliff diving, that was not time to ask for a $52 million facility that had a payroll of $3 million a year. We pivoted as a city, as a council, and we went in the direction that we not, we, we, we should have done, and, you know, things of that nature. Uh, and then we have the challenges of being a mayor, and, you know, there, there are many, you know, the one good thing about being ADHD, I never have the same day twice. You know, it's always something. Uh, but let me tell you, uh, you know, but once again, I was finding that work-life balance, I was doing home care, physical therapy, so I was able to, you know, change my, uh, you know, schedule accordingly. And, uh, yeah, but then something happened, it was called COVID, and that changed the whole thing. And then all of a sudden, my part-time job became extremely full-time, yeah, beyond full-time. And I took a, uh, significant salary hit because I couldn't treat patients, and I was up to midnight doing paperwork on the patients and everything. I, I couldn't serve those two masters. And, uh, let's put it this way, I was making really good money, and the cut that I took at that time was about three times of what my mayor's salary is. I had to go on social security. There were times that I had less than $10 in the bank. And, you know, I'm, I'm not saying this for sympathy or anything, I'm just saying, it's the reality of the position, and I finally was able to get a part-time teaching gig with Region. But we all know that this is a sacrifice, we don't do this, uh, you know, you know, to, you know, to make ourselves wealthy and to do things, we do things with the heart of service. And I could just, if I can say one thing, that take a look where we are, take a look at the chemistry of this council, take a look at the diversity, take a, about the expertise that everybody brings to this table. And we all knew what we were going to make going in, like I, you know, like I said, uh, you know, when I went into the Marine Corps in 1968, 92 bucks a month, and then again, then once I made private first class, it was a big bump, up to $98. That's what I spend now when I take the grandchildren to Cinemec cafe. Uh, but once again, I, you know, I think what we all have in common here is the heart of servant, but, you know, once again, you know, with, with the timing of things, I think if we take a little time to pause and reflect, and also give the time for the economy to improve a little bit, and, you know, things of that nature, you know, I think we serve our public well. And, you know, but once again, it, you know, what Rosemary and I always talk about, we're delighted by the fact that what we see with this council is a chemistry that we can talk about anything, and, you know, really work as a team for the people. And, you know, once again, I, you know, uh, Jennifer, you bring up a point, you know, we're the largest city in the Commonwealth, 460,000, we're all part-timers, you know, kind of by design. You know, but once again, that's conversations, you know, for later going on, but at least we're having the conversations. And, you know, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, this was a tough one, and as everything we do, there's a public reaction, positive and negative, you know, we get blamed for everything, every time we vote, we're making somebody mad, okay? Uh, even on the simplest of votes. But once again, I think this is the course for now, but, you know, once again, any type of thing for further discussion, that in the future will make us even a better council, is worthy of discussion. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, you know?
Continue with agenda.
Yeah. That was agenda and council comments kind of blended in.
Was that deferred or referred?
So, if everybody's okay, we will have this on consent for deferral and send to FISC. Okay? Sorry.
That's indefinite, correct?
Yes, indefinite deferral.
Thank you.
And, uh, any of the other items, anybody want to say anything on any other items?
Any other items?
On item four, the, uh, five-year renewal lease for the Senior Resource Center, I'm on the, um, uh, ex officio board member, but that's not a conflict, I'm just a volunteer. But I do want to thank you all for that project, it's the best project in the city, I'm not at all, uh, proud of it a bit, but it's great, and thank you so much to the city for allowing us to use that. Uh, I am five, I am just not going to be able to, uh, support this for a couple of reasons. It specifically directs the city manager to implement this plan, and I think it, I don't think it's clear yet that the city, what we're thinking economic development is, is the same thing that the public is, and I think that needs to be clarified. But then there's this, um, item.
Same here, number five.
I'm just saying I'm voting against this. Item 2.17, where we say that we finalize the design plans for the new law enforcement training center facility in the ITA. I, I still say the ITA is not the place for that, uh, we know it's got very poorly drained soils, and it's no place for us to build an $82 million facility. So for those two reasons, I'll be voting against item six, item five.
Anybody else, anybody else?
I have a couple.
Stacy?
Okay. Sticking with item five, um, the only issue, the issue I have with, uh, this is that it says the LITA must be in the ITA, and we talked about, um, some available land, specifically this 12 acres off of Prosperity, that we were going to look and see if maybe that was a possible, and I, I don't have a problem with it being in the, in the ITA, but I, I just think that limiting us to saying that it has to be in the ITA, I, I don't know that we made that decision yet.
Patrick?
Uh, the council could change it, I mean, we've briefed on it, y'all said that in the retreat, but we can change it. As I said before, um, the decision doesn't get final until about Ju-, probably like April, May, right? So you are appropriated funds, your three previous directions was to do it in the ITA, right? We are under procurement right now to find a design contractor, the design contractor needs to know where they're designing it for. That decision hasn't been made yet, so council could change that to say, you know, but...
If I'm mistaken, we gave direction to pursue that.
Yeah, I would, so, just, I'm just a little confused myself, so, we had Bird Neck, Bird Neck Two, Prosperity, Way Out, that was Gun Range, never mind, and then, and then the, uh, the, the ITA. Did we, did we, are those others done? Is that where we are, so it is at the ITA?
That's what I couldn't remember. So the last time we talked about this, council said, do it in the ITA, you know, and if council wants to, we can take that, we can say, we'll work towards the design of LITA, and not make it specific to the ITA, and we can come back to you all, because it's not poured on concrete yet, but come April, May, we need a decision when we award that contract, where we tell it this design firm to design it. So I'm fine if you pivot it, because we'll always bring it back to you all, because what I'm hearing is you all are uneasy on it, you know, so I'm fine, I'm fine, you know, we can, council, you know, you can probably make an amendment, can Mark, can they make an amendment to that? Where they basically say, you know, work on the design of the ITA, work on the design of the LITA facility, and we'll come back to you all before we make a decision on it.
For a final decision?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I think we exhausted the other, uh, you know, ways to do it, and this was probably the only real spot we could put it.
Yeah.
The other one's not Bird Neck.
It's not Bird Neck, either, sorry. I, I know that we exhausted, you know, Bird Neck, that was fine, but that 12 acres of Prosperity that has infrastructure right there, we asked the question, I don't know that we ever moved on. I just don't recall moving off of that.
I don't think, I think it was Bird Neck One and Two, wasn't it? Was there Prosperity?
There was 12 acres right off of General Booth, and I thought it was...
It's off General Booth.
It's off of General Booth.
It's at the park.
This could be Bird Neck, okay.
Yes. The second part of...
It's sitting on...
This is, um, I'll say this, we're blurring closed session conversations, that's what's going on, I'll say this. All right, so, Mayor, I think just make the friendly amendment, and just say, we'll work towards designing, um, yeah, that's fine. Because, um, I, I'm like, we do...
I can read this with a, just some...
So Vice Mayor, this is what we're saying, section is for 2.17, finalize design plans for the new law enforcement training academy. The new facility will expand training capacity and better meet public safety, so we just basically struck out in the ITA, right? Yeah, so basically what we're saying is, where it says in the ITA, we just strike that out, and it's going to say finalize design plans for the new law enforcement training academy facility.
So does that need, does that need to be read in the...
I, yeah, I think you should just say, with the amendment being, we're deleting the words "in the ITA" from paragraph 2-17 on page nine.
2-17.
Page nine. Can I ask a question about this, maybe?
Um, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, only, I guess, because, well, not only because, because, um, because we didn't know about Prosperity, we didn't know about, we didn't, or we didn't...
It's clearly a Bird Neck, yeah, it's off of, it's off of Adam, it's, it's off of General Booth.
So we didn't know about that other...
The 12 acres, right.
So, um, but will we get to a place where, because we've had these other opportunities?
Yes.
Are, are we going to distill them down and...
That's, this is where we're kind of blurring things. Okay, so, um, yes, we will, right?
That's all I knew.
I didn't know, basically, before May, you all need to tell me finally where it's going to be.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, but you, well before then...
We can have heard the discussion.
Yeah, well before then, we'll get it to you guys.
That's fine. We're all good.
Are you still in?
I won't go so far as to vote no, I'll just, uh, express my concern about the fact that I think we need to talk a little bit more about what we need, what we talk about when we say we want to pursue economic development.
So...
Because I think...
You know, lots of discussion there, I won't vote, go so far as to vote no.
Okay, then I have a quick one on item two. Um, well, I, I mean, I don't like it, but, like, you know, we're going to do it, help them out, but, um, and I know that the wording says that, that 5.8 million cannot be used to offset premiums. My concern is, we get further down the road, they get a healthy fund balance down the road, and then they decide that, okay, well, we can take some of that fund balance and use it for something else, and I would like to just limit them to, if they get a healthy fund balance before they move any monies around, it's got to go to the CIP.
So, you may want to explain this better, but it's going to be in their special reserve fund, so they can't move it around.
Yeah. I want Dana, I want Dana to clarify that, that's right. You tell them what they can do with that fund.
So we put two governors on it, one is the location of the money, so it's in the, the city side of the books, if you will. So the only way they can get to it is to make a request to the city for an amount certain, and it can only be used to replenish their fund balance, and it can't be used for employee, uh, premium assistance. And so we feel between the actual location of the money, and then the limits on the use of the money, that we're providing as much, um, guardrails, if you will, to make sure that the money goes where this council intends it to go and nowhere else.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable that we had the, that they don't have the ability to take that money elsewhere, without...
We believe they need it so much for this purpose, that they don't have that flexibility, that with their consultant, that they would say their fund balance position is in such a state that they can move it elsewhere.
Yeah, the four, five years, the fund balance can change.
Oh, so, so this action is only for this fiscal year, we, we can...
That's my concern.
They would have to come back to us.
Okay. Um, Vice Mayor, Mayor, can I, Dana, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, Mark, um, could the council, in the budget that we adopt annually, and it could become like water play language, could we give direction on that governor to be incorporated in that, and then it'll be like a, something that'll be a part of the budget ordinance?
So unfortunately, you'd have to do basically what we're doing here. Because...
Voter signs?
By state law, there's really only two ways you can fund the schools in their budget, right? You could do a lump sum appropriation, or you can do it by the major categories, and so, i- in that regard, that's how you do it in the budget process. And what we're doing here is, we're out of the budget process, we're in the version process, and we're putting it in a, in a specific place that the city controls. And so, again, you could do a future thing where it's in that place where the city controls, and it's got limits to it, but you'd have to put it on the city sides of the books, because if you fund schools, there's really only two options by state law, and neither of them give you the level of control the council seems like it wants right now.
That's my concern.
Stacy, we used to do categorical funding, and they begged and begged and begged to have lump sum funding, and the council, for a number of years, finally agreed to give them lump sum funding, which means they can move their money all around, if that's appropriated. This is different, because this isn't a special category. Does that make sense?
That, I understand, this is only, we're only adjusting the 5.8 for this year.
Correct.
Next, five years from now, they get a really healthy fund balance.
I'll let Kevin talk about it, because he's on BEC and actually...
County member. Um, so, the location of which this is being appropriated is the school special revenue fund, as Dana said, it lives on the city books. The only time funds are appropriated or allocated for use from this is by approval by city council. So say they don't request a drawdown or transfer from this before the end of the year to their school, um, health fund, it will remain within that special revenue fund for a future point in time to be appropriated upon the approval by city council for the designated purpose to be, for which its request to be appropriate, if that makes sense. In the past, there's very few transactions, it's not a operating account, or operating fund, if you will, it is a fund that typically schools park appropriations at for use in the following year CIP. So it's, it's really not a operational, um, categorical category type of, of appropriation that goes to schools, if you will. We, we look at this annually as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Um, Mr., Mr. Mayor, Kevin, um, but I think what Mr. Cummings is saying, because even if that's a, even if that 5.8, and I could be wrong, and if I am, correct me, even, the council's authorized that 5.8 to be in that reserve fund... Even if the council's authorized that 5.8 to be in that reserve fund, is that the same thing as the health fund?
No.
So I think to Mr. Cummings' point is that in some off-chance, they may get a healthy fund balance, and a new board and a new administration may have a different recommendation, that, I think, to acknowledge what Mr. Cummings is saying. That still is out there. That, yeah, this still is out there. But this 5.8 will be in a fund earmarked that they need council approval to move, but the health fund is a different animal, sir. So to your point, I think you're correct, sir.
So to that point, if they do have a healthy reserve, would we get to clawback the money in the, in the special revenue fund?
You can really only control between now and the end of June. I, I think what you're talking about is years in the future.
That's what we're talking.
So I guess we're, we're limited to the 5.8 of them.
Remember, they have to report to us every three days.
Once it goes to the health fund, I don't think so.
They would, they would have to request the transfer from that fund over to the health fund.
And once it's in the health fund?
Correct, once it's in the health fund. But our understanding and, and, and working is sufficient amount would be transferred over upon request. I don't think the desire or the intent, um, is to, okay, well, we need it, so we're going to request the full 5.8. It would only be provided based on what is needed to keep the fund solvent and whole. And more of a periodic drawdown and allocation that if the request is actually needed.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Are, are you okay? Or do you want to vote?
I, I think, you know, the probability that in the future we're going to have a very healthy fund and it'll be an issue, might be minor, but still the probability's there. And I just, in fairness, I don't think they should reboot.
So are, are you okay with it, or are you a no?
Not a no. I'm not okay with it, I'm not a no.
Should I answer your question?
Sounds like Mrs. Hemlock.
Stacy is definitely ten of us.
Everything is on consent. Number one is going to be deferred and sent to PISC, deferred indefinitely. And number five, um, item 217 on page nine is, we're going to be deleting the words ITA.
ITA.
Am I okay with that? All right.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by section 2.23711A Code of Virginia, amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussion of the award of public contracts involving the expenditure of public funds and discussing the terms of scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.23711A29. And that is the Protocol, uh, Project Pro- Protocol Stone, and then also the 19th Street Parks RFP, and then personal matters, discussions, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, concordance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific, uh, public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.23711A1, and that's for boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Still moved. Second.
Governor Dwyer, Governor Cummings.
Aye.
Governor Hutchinson.
Aye.
Governor Ross Manchin.
Aye.
Governor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into.